So, good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 29th, Regular City Council Meeting. DeStyes Elliott, will you please call roll?
Mayor Benjamin.
Present.
Councilmember Delara.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerin.
Here.
Councilmember Gaither.
Here.
Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Councilmember Wright requested to be excused for this meeting. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Want to approve.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Excused. We have with us here tonight our Ninth District legislators, and so I'd like to, since they're here, go ahead and move them up to the beginning part of the agenda, and then we'll continue on with our agenda. And I know that Representative Dye is on her way and soon to be here, but it's good to have Senator Sessler and also Representative Smick. I wanted to provide, first of all, opportunity for each of you to start, and just talking about what do you see coming forward in the legislative session, and things that we can anticipate, and then from there, for us to be able to talk about the items that we've identified for Pullman. Senator Sessler?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good to be with you again this fall. I think we've been doing this for a very long time, sometimes a little later in the years, but always a good event. I'll give you a little bit of my crystal ball, and it's not very good. I think until we see the outcome of November's elections on a variety of subjects, our crystal balls are all going to be kind of hazy. That said, there's several basic underlying factors I would consider. First of all, anything related to transportation is in real need of a general package again. We can talk about roads, bypasses, city streets. We all have needs. The current funding package prohibits any of the new money from CCA from going to any highways. At the same time, both candidates for governor have said, we probably need to pull the brakes on the hybrid electric ferries due to the rapid cost ex- escalations that hurt the ferry users, but also desperately tap the transportation budget. So, it was 2015, we did Connecting Washington. We're probably getting close to do for some type of very general transportation package that can cover all of the state. The second area, the operating budget, I think OFM has been very straightforward and said, don't look for a lot of growth with current revenue. Collective bargaining agreement, I think, is about as fair as they could do with the resources available. So, under the current circumstances, you know, it's not a big problem, but it's going to be a little tight. The third area is the one I know the best, and that's capital budget. I've been involved with for four years. And it was the best of times to be part of the capital budget. We have our general obligation bond, subject to the constitutional debt limit and statutory debt limit, and you prioritize, it's almost always been bipartisan, and you come to a deal. Except, we've had federal dollars from COVID that increased the ability to do nice things. Then we had the Inflation Reduction Act, the Infrastructure Act, on and on and on. And then, two years ago, the staff went back and they realized there was $440 million of bonds counting against the debt limit that hadn't actually been exercised. So, after going through this drill a couple of times, verified with State Treasurer, Ways and Main Staff, they said, you have a whole lot of capacity you assumed was used. So, everybody pretty much got what they wanted the last few years. We're going to probably have a tighter, more traditional capital budget. How it gets appropriated, what the priorities are, I think are kind of a guess. I expect the likely chair, Senator Trudeau, worked very well with myself and colleagues from my caucus. We had a good working relationship, and we'll assume that's the case. But that's sort of an overview of those three budgets of capital's going to be down a little bit because we don't have those rare fines or influxes. And transportation, where it's be 10 years since Connecting Washington, and then a kind of a flat status quo operating budget that we'll probably face. These things are basically certain to happen irregardless of the exact outcome of the November elections. We can talk about speculate what factors could change those, but that's sort of a broad overview of where we're at.
Griffin, Smick?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to stick around healthcare, since that's the area where I've spent most of my time in the legislature. One thing we've got to pay attention to, oh, I would first, let's start with this. I think the first priority of our budget is to make sure that the services that the state is already providing continue. To make sure that, you know, the increases that the senator spoke of go to these folks who really provide some pretty vital services to our communities, such as the DD community, the residential services. Pretty important, and it's a pretty specialized job. So, we need to keep these folks. And so, I think that's going to be the first priority of what we start with. I am concerned, I, the Ninth District has nine, or not nine, eight critical access hospitals in our district, and the financial well-being is not great amongst all of them. Some are better than others, but we're going to have to take a look at that, because they're too important to each of these communities and the surrounding areas that they serve to let them really struggle. So, we're going to have to take a look at that. We're going to have to continue to be creative around mental health and substance abuse, especially in the rural areas. I know that Councilman Weller and I have had numerous conversations. And by the way, I got some money in for NAMI to actually go out and to give mental health first aid classes in our rural areas. And why do we need to do that? I don't know, make sure you're all aware, agriculture is suicide. You compare the rates among ag, people working ag compared to the regular populace, it's three times the rate. And in Washington, it's even higher. And it's pretty concerning. I think that any of us that have been around the area very long know people in agriculture that have committed suicide. And with really low ag commodity prices and the struggles that the growers are facing right now, this is pretty important stuff. Got to keep these folks alive. And I mean that, and we've got to be able to help them. And so, that one's pretty important to me. And last thing, the last thing I want to talk about is primary care. We need to be able to continue to provide care in rural areas. I've talked with the folks at your hospital. I've talked, a lot of people, I've talked to anybody, and get their opinions about how we're going to deliver services and care, especially in the rural areas. And for me, those are kind of the areas that really need focus on and to help because it helps every person in our district when we accomplish these things. And so, thank you. Thanks for having us.
Thank you very much. And I know as you're talking budgets, we're in the midst of budgets here. In fact, a lot of our staffer and department heads are here presenting budgets, and so we understand the challenges around budgets right now. If you look at the, we provided with you the, our legislative priorities, and one of the things that, as a council that did this year, was looked at priority areas that are longer-term goals, and then there's, there's our shorter-term goals. And that's where you see these priority areas around the bypass, the rail banking, and also the housing affordability. And these are just because they're longer-term things that we're working on. Within the bypass, there's two aspects to that piece that we're looking at. One is the freight mobility study that is, that we're starting, and we're, have a RFQ that, I think it's tomorrow.
Interviewed today.
Interviewed today. So, it was related to the RFQ to look at, how do we get freight off of the downtown highway? Our challenge is, we have two highways across through town, which cause a lot of congestion. And I'm sure you've probably been in some of those congestion times down in Maine and Grand. And so, within that is the freight piece, but then the other side of it is, is still, we have a lot of congestion at the, at the Maine and Grand, and how can we do, even if we can do an in-town bypass-type piece. And so, with that first, this first one was in that context of interested, you know, what, we would like to be able to do some exploration around, could we, could we work on a design for an in-town bypass that could actually create some of those freight, the reduction around that congestion piece, even though we're working on the freight piece, this is the rest. But interested, just the process for us, and is there, is there money or support in this way?
Well, you always have support for your constituents. That's pretty automatic. But the real point is, from my opening remarks, it's going on, 10 years ago, we did a transportation package. If you look, we've completed the lanes on 195 and 26. We've done 395 on the other end of the district. And over that 10-year period of time, inflation for the primary ingredients for building and maintaining our highways has gone up. When the Climate Commitment Act passed legislature, roads are specifically prohibited from receiving any of that money. So, we don't know what's going to happen with that on the initiative. We probably all have different opinions. But some type of a transportation package, if we talk to our counties, they have some dire needs. We hear from our constituents about, can't we at least do striping on the roads? And we have some very critical city issues. But we have to have some type of a package that can be bonded and will provide revenue for transportation, preferably more sustainably. But if we stay status quo, we're all going to be very disappointed in what we have for transportation.
Any other thoughts or comments from the council on this item?
Our next one then jumps into the in-town rail banking. This is something that we've talked about, you know, for a number of years. We're really focused on the in-town piece, not, not anything that goes out of town. I know that even if you look between Pullman and Colfax, there's now been a second bridge that's been burned. So, the likelihood of anything happening with that rail line through there is, seems very unlikely. So, interested just for the timing-wise, I know that there is a study that's being done related to the viability of rail, whether, and we're actually having conversations with Colfax to see whether, how viable it is for them, because I know with our last conversations, it was, you'd like to be able to see if there's a pathway for Pullman and Colfax together. I can't, I can't speak for Colfax, but I hope to have some answers soon related to what their plans are. So.
I don't think any of us are in opposition. It's just a pathway forward in trying to get something that's acceptable to the local communities, both Pullman and Colfax, and the Surface Transportation Board, is to move us that way.
So, and we'll be happy to work, work with you on, on, you know, what that would look like and direction.
Well, I think one of the things we can't overlook, we need to work with our delegation in the other Washington. If we need a simple denim to a section of a transportation budget, we need to use our relationships in that other Washington to make it happen. We'll see what happens after November, but we need to have that conversation that, hey, can we do this one time in one appropriation and solve the problem without having to choose between friends or priorities?
Yeah, because we're really excited about the possibility of how we could utilize the rail here, and also just the beautification that it would bring to our community too. So, it's not just, it's the utilization, but then also that beauty piece. Any others on the rail piece?
Go ahead. Councilmember Weller?
Thank you. Yes, I think, you know, this is, this is something that I know several people of our constituents have talked to. But I will also say, we are not unaware of the importance also of property rights when it comes to, you know, out in the county. And I've, I have several people who are friends, the West, and I did some farming for them, who, you know, he's come and talked to me about this as well. And it's very important for us to be able to be respectful of the entire region while also being able to utilize, you know, our land here for, you know, more options. So, I think, I just want to make sure that you know that we are also very aware of that.
And the housing one, Councilmember Guido's really done a lot of work in this area with our community. So, if you want to kind of kick off this one.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Yeah, we do have a work group that's looking at the whole issue of affordable housing, which is certainly not exclusive to this area. It's going across the nation in terms of affordability being an issue. One of the things that we are hearing about, if we want to have affordable housing, are the, the energy requirements that are being put forward, and some folks feeling like that's contradictory to building affordable housing. I wanted your guys' thoughts on that, as well as what kind of efforts are being made to look at some of this new technology that can be used for constructing houses that could help with energy efficiency?
When you talk about new technology, a little bit more, please.
Well, for instance, the, the Land Trust, the Community Housing Trust over in Moscow, they just built two smaller homes that are made with this SIP technology and.
ZIP?
SIP, S, or I think it's SUP or SIP. But there, there are items out there that, it seems to me that if we did, like you were saying, be more creative, that there are some energy-efficient ways of putting housing together that doesn't require the package of what, when I talk to developers, they say it's typically about $30,000 is what they're looking at to, to bring their house up to code for the requirements.
Well, I think that the building code has been a challenge, to say the least. When I talk to builders that build both in Washington and Idaho, if the house is under 1,500 square feet, the difference between building in Washington and Idaho is about 45,000 less in Idaho. If it's above 1,500 square feet, it bumps up to about 60,000. And that's building code requirements, that's permitting, that's the whole gamut of hookups and whatnot. You know, I think, I don't know anything about what Pullman charges, you know, for all their stuff. Maybe you need to take a look at that, you know, to try to look at the costs. That's a significant amount of money, that 45,000 under 1,500 square foot, or 60,000. And guess where people are building? Well, they're not building in Washington, they're going to build in, in Idaho. And it's just economics. So, we're not helping ourselves in that. So, I, to me, all these things need to be on the table and take a look at, if we're going to look about affordability. I agree that there are some new technologies. There's, I ran across a guy who builds modular homes that are extremely energy-efficient. You know, they're not that large, but I think we need to be doing everything we can to encourage those things and get them cited as easily as we can, you know, in our communities.
Yeah, so there, so we're, with that housing work group, we're actually working to come up with a better plan and direction that we can come back with. And, go ahead.
So, I'm going to go a little off-script here, because to me, housing and homelessness go together. And there is a group of folks in the community who are looking at the issue of homelessness. And the Community Action Center, which you're familiar with, has received a mandate from the state to do a study on this and to basically come up with a plan for how we're going to address that. And I can say that it's an unfunded mandate to look at this, and that doesn't put us in a great position when we don't necessarily have the resources for that. Any thoughts about that issue?
Why, you'll have to educate me a little bit. Why, why is it a mandate on Community Action? Are they a designate for the city or county?
They're a county designate.
Okay, that's, that helps clear that up for me. You know, I think it's, it's different in every community. That's, that's, when you're in Clarkston, you have a significant problem. When you're in Lewiston, you don't. We understand the differences between the two states, but Clarkston has a third of the population and almost all the homelessness. So, there's a, there's a wide range of things involved. I feel sorry for Community Action. They do a lot of good work in this area. To have a mandate, I think people at Pullman are probably smarter than the state comes to getting it done.
Councilmember Weller?
If I may, on that same tangent, on the homelessness. I think also something that is really challenging, and this would be, I would say for most northern states, is that the point-in-time count that comes down from national, you know, requirements, they count the amount of homelessness in, in a community, and that is directly attached to federal funding for homeless assistance. And that happens in January, when most people are, it's going to be very difficult for those homeless to be found in the first place. And second of all, for the volunteers or the employees from, whether it's Community Action Center, or I know the police help quite a bit in this, to locate, communicate with those homeless. And I know it's not, nothing you can do, but I just wanted to make sure that you understand, it's a, it's a huge challenge for funding as well, for not only Community Action Center, but any homeless efforts. So.
If the community puts together a plan, you know, on some housing, I hope that we can be helpful. Sometimes it's a bit of a challenge working through commerce and servicing or in helping some of the smaller communities. Some of our smaller communities have really struggled dealing with the department, and that's, I think that's something we probably can help with, to make sure that, you know, some money. So, if you come up with a plan, you've got an idea, let's, let's try to run with that.
And honestly, that's, that's what we're trying to do. And kind of similar, pigging back to that, to the one around business, please.
Can you tell me, I'm familiar with the Land Trust principle that they're doing. So, what I, what I don't understand, what happens when that property would resell? Does the homeowner, the person there at all, do they participate in any of the gain? Let's say that there was a gain from the time they built to when they, it transfers. Can you explain that process, please?
Sure. So, my understanding is that they, they, the buyer of the house builds equity in the house over time. And when they go to sell it, they're capped at a certain amount. They can't go over a certain amount to sell it, and it's through a formula. So, they will get the equity that they earned through the purchase of the house, and then the trust goes ahead and sells it to the next person. So, they've, they've capped the cost so that they keep it somewhat affordable.
I know they've been doing that over in Moscow. Are there other areas in our state that have been utilizing that same plan?
So, I'm actually on the board of the, the Community Trust over in Moscow, and we decided to expand into, into Pullman specifically. So, we're going to try and do that. The, the trust keeps the land essentially. So, it's, it's separated out.
So, I was going to touch on, with the housing plan, and it kind of goes into our business piece, where you've noticed in the news, a number of businesses that are closing in Pullman. Most of those are, you, a significant amount of them are border issues, where they're, they, they talk about the difficulty of being able to do business in Washington versus Idaho. And one of the things that the chamber is doing right now is they're doing interviews with a number of businesses in different, in different areas. And then they're, they're actually, as a part of it, they're working to separate out, what are the issues that are state issues? And then, are there any issues that are, that are city issues, where you asked about, can the city do better? And so, they're actually doing these, having these conversations. I'm not involved in it. The chamber director's not involved in it, in order, so the people aren't influenced by us being in the room in order to get this data, so that we can then provide it to you, to, to be able to separate and tell the stories of what are the, the challenges that businesses are having in the different industries, and how they're affected, whether it's by state or whether. affected, whether it's by state or whether it's, it's by city issues. So, so we're, we're trying to be able to give you those, those stories and be able to, and then also for the city to be able to improve. Are there other, I don't want to be the one talking through this whole time, so is there anyone that have issues that they'd like to bring up or talk about, any of the specific So Carl, I'll go ahead and let you, since we haven't heard from you yet, so.
All right. So thank you so much for, for coming here today and listening to our concerns here in Pullman. So I want to highlight support for our students pursuing higher education in Pullman, and particularly continued support for the Washington College Grant and the Post-Secondary Basic Needs Act. As you know, we have a large student population here in Pullman, and we, as council members, represent them. And I hope during your next state legislative session, that you can continue supporting the Washington College Grant that makes education accessible to low-income students who want to come to Pullman to pursue an education at WSU. I didn't do my education in Washington, but I am a product of tuition assistance. Recently graduated with my PhD in computer science. So having that pathway as a low-income student, to be able to pursue my PhD here at WSU, was very helpful. And I wish that for other students who want to pursue their education at WSU. I also hope for continued support and expansion of funding for programs and initiatives from the Post-Secondary Basic Needs Act. So that was passed under HB 1559, which was under the 2023, 2024 Washington State Legislative Session. As you know, tuition is only one part of what makes, one part of what students need to worry about, especially from those, from financially disadvantaged backgrounds. It also includes whether they have enough of food to eat, if they're able to maintain their mental and physical health. So the Post-Secondary Basic Needs Act tackles those issues. So currently, these programs and initiatives from this act tackle basic needs like food security and are currently active across the state here and at WSU Pullman. So, for example, the act allowed state funding to provide basic needs navigators to help students get connected to resources on campus and in the community. So WSU Pullman currently has their basic needs and navigator. So I have other talking points, but I don't want to take up too much time.
Keep it short.
Yeah. And I'm happy to provide more information. But in summary, I hope you all support students here in Pullman and throughout Washington State who are pursuing higher education. So thank you for listening.
Well, that's relatively easy ask, because we are the only district in the state with two four-year universities. So since, ever since we cut tuition and linked wage growth, and a lot of it, as you mentioned, navigating students to the services that are there that they may not be aware of, is always going to be a priority here in our district. I think it's, it's a little discouraging to watch the University of Idaho enrollment grow while ours hasn't. And I hope that the next president gets back to a pro-growth model, because I'm watching too many really good kids that aren't coming here that traditionally did. So I, I hope we turn that corner in the next administration.
Councilmember Gay, through you.
Briefly, I'll just say that under business nonprofit economic development tucked in the last sentence is advanced affordable childcare options. And childcare access and affordability are significant challenges in our area, and we could really use your support in that area. Otherwise, childcare is just unaffordable, in some cases unattainable. And so we're losing many workers, especially women. They're, you know, they're exiting the labor force because they're on enough childcare options. So I'd like you to speak on that, and hopefully we'll have your support in that way, in that area.
Well, there are many issues around childcare. We've made it very expensive. And, and, and we've been frankly unsuccessful in trying to change some of the root causes that plague not only here, but across the state. And you're spot on about how many people are leaving the workforce that businesses so desperately need because, because of this. So we're going to continue to, to, can work on this and to try to make it more affordable. It's just taken too big of a bite for, for folks to try to navigate that. Tell me how this works on campus now, for those that desire, have to have childcare. How does it work up there?
Well, there is a childcare facility on campus, but it's usually a long waitlist, very long, talking--
So there's not enough capacity up there?
Not enough capacity, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Fitzgerald?
Councilmember Parks?
I just want to say thank you both for coming. And Joe, I do appreciate your continued attention on healthcare, particularly mental health. I think that's really important and ties into a lot of the other issues that we have. Regarding the bypass and the rail repurposing, it was just, you know, if there's a way, we could, we're trying to figure out if there's a way we can get us and the county to work together on the county property. Because a lot of the property for both of those, even especially the bypass, is out in the county. And so if we're trying to see if there's a way we can get together with them and be more united front for, to, to help, you know, to help you help us. So thank you.
Working my, working my way back. Councilmember Waller, do you have any, anything else?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, I just have to say I really appreciate talking about region, the region for mental health. And, you know, it's, it's interesting, being on Resilient, being able to hear, you know, the different, you know, people from Palouse, people from Colfax, all working towards the same goal. And the farmer suicides is absolutely staggering when we heard about that. And something that I think, and this is not something that I really put in here, but as I've gone to different events, whether that's St. John's Web Slow, whether that's, you know, the, we were talking, the haunted hospital in Colfax, or haunted Palouse, we went to, you know, the, the powerhouse of events and economic development in this region as a total. And as I talked to a lot of the people that were putting these on, they say, "We send people to Pullman because we don't have, you know, the hotels and so on." That's real community heart, that's real regional community support. So I think all of us talking to Colfax about the, you know, rails, the trails, and, you know, I just want to say thank you for continuing to be supportive. And I think all of us really do think about the entire region when we're looking at a lot of these things. What helps one community is ultimately going to help our entire region. And I think I, that's really what I wanted to end on saying.
Councilmember Quintero?
I too want to thank Representative Schmick for your focus on healthcare. I know that's a passion of yours, I think it is mine as well. And I just wanted to bring to your, both of your attention that I'm heading up a exploratory committee that's looking at the issue of substance use disorder in this area. And while it doesn't have the same magnitude as some of the larger population areas in the state, nevertheless, it exists. And so, much so that it's part and parcel of mental health issues and homelessness, and it goes hand in hand. We are looking at the idea of starting a substance use disorder recovery center as part of the whole recovery picture. Treatment facilities continue to be an issue in Pullman and in Whitman County, the lack of them. And it's, it's something that's very much on people's radar as a missing piece.
I might suggest taking a look at the legislature passed in the last session, a 23-and-a-half-hour drop-in center for mental health. It might be something you want, want to explore as a community. This is a model that has been down in Arizona, that has been working, and they're starting to roll those out now. I would suggest learning about it, taking a look at it, and to see if that might be something that might fit for, for the area. There's, I'm not going to kid you, there's going to be some hoops to jump through to get there, but I, I think, take a look at that.
With that, any, any last thoughts?
Is "thank you" okay?
Thank you worked.
Appreciate this meeting to get, be very clear on what, hopefully we'll be able to work together moving forward.
We work to make it concise, keep it down to one page. And if you notice, there's actually less items on here than in previous years, so that's one of the things. And, and so that you know, one of the things that I'm working on is how do we bring back some of the connections out into the rest of the county? So one thing that went by the wayside with COVID was the Whitman County Mayor's Exchange. That's something that I'm in conversations right now, and it's, it's going to be starting back up again. So to get, so to be able to, those connection points at, at the, at the county level, because Pullman is the largest town, but we're all really interconnected within Whitman County. And, and I want for us to be aware of that. So thank you again for, for being here. As for council, we're going to take a five-minute break while we reset and let our legislators get on the road, so they get home at a decent hour. So I'm reconvening the regular city council meeting for mayor's community announcements. We have a few. First is next week's city council is a special meeting. It's going to be on Monday at 6:00 PM in order to hold the budget workshop. It's in lieu of the regular council meeting that would have been on election night, and so we've moved it to Monday. And we have upcoming Veterans Day, City Hall, the City of Pullman Administrative Offices, and the Neil Public Library. We'll be closed on Monday, November 11th for Veterans Day. Offices and library will reopen on Tuesday, November 12th. Emergency services will remain available during this time. And remember that the resident's leaf collection is coming up, is starting November 12th. And if you want to look at dates for the, for the leaf collection, you can go to pullmanwa.gov/leaves. And then this week, we have a lot of Halloween events that are happening. First is the Boussoon Extravaganza. I think it should be Bassoon, but it's Boo Soon. A family-friendly concert at Neil Public Library, featuring musicians from WSU and U of I. That is Wednesday, the 30th, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM, and that event is free. Then on Halloween, so the 31st, from 4:00 to 7:00, there's going to be a Halloween carnival at Pullman Parks and Rec for ages three through 10, and that's actual chronicle ages, not just how you feel. Free admission, thanks to GISA Credit Union, and you can register at parksandrec.com. And then on Friday, the 1st, from 3:30 to 4:30, the Neil Public Library is doing the event, and I'm going to not get this right, El Dia de la Muertos, Celebration. event, and I'm going to not get this right, El Dia de los Muertos Celebration. Carla, could you give me?
Yeah, Dia de los Muertos.
Thank you. And then also, that night, from 6:00 to 8:30, is going to be the Spooky Splash at Pullman Aquatic Center. Admission is $9 per person for residents, 11 for non-residents, and you can register at pullman-wa.gov/spookysplash. So there's plenty of activities for all ages, for those who would like to participate. Next up is a non-agenda item. This is a community comments for non-agenda-related items. This agenda item is the first of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comments to the attention of the elected officials. Specifically, this item is reserved for the public comment, concerns, or other information not related to previous public hearing or final action of the agenda. These comments are not to exceed 30 minutes in total, and comments are being directed to the mayor or the city council's body. No comments should be directed to an individual council member. Is there anyone who would like to provide community comments? Please?
So your list of Halloween things was a great segue. I have a couple of items I just wanted to make announcements about. So Pullman Civic Trust is sponsoring Pullman's first pumpkin wall, which is starting tonight. It's in front of the caboose on the Grand Avenue side, right by the railroad tracks. We've got some shelves. Community members have carved pumpkins. They brought them to the chamber today. We put them up, put lights in them, and it looks really, really great. And that's for all ages, no matter how you feel. So check it out on your way home tonight, and it's going to be up through Halloween night, so opportunity to see it. A second thing that Pullman Civic Trust is sponsoring, so I don't know if you remember way back in April when the construction started, we hosted a construction kickoff party, and part of what we did was we instigated a passport to downtown as a mechanism to try to encourage citizens to go repeatedly and sustainably support our downtown businesses through every month of construction. So it was a passport, each page was a month of construction, and the challenge was, if you go to different businesses downtown, get four stickers every single month, then we would enter your name in a drawing and have VIP status at a post-construction party. Well, we're not doing a post-construction party. Instead, we are doing a construction is almost over party on November 16th, and we're calling it the Sneak Peek at the New Concrete, a construction wrap-up party. And again, we're going to be highlighting the new features that all of the construction has brought to downtown. And so we're going to send people out down, exploring, give them some ideas about what we have, that we didn't have before, and really to highlight kind of the new shiny downtown just before it finishes construction on the 22nd. So I wanted to invite anybody listening to please come, and also each and every one of you, I have flyers to hand out. You can put them up anywhere you want, and please come.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to provide comment? If not, I'll close comments and on to city council member comments. With that, Councilmember Fagerin.
Thank you. I just have one announcement of a food drive that's putting, being put on by a couple of student groups. GPSA, ASWU, and the Crop and Soil Science Graduate Student Association are holding a food drive to support food security in Pullman. Households across Pullman will receive a flyer between November 2nd and November 4th at their doorstep on how to participate in the food drive. Community members will be asked to leave a non-perishable food item on their doorstep on November 6th, and a member of the food drive team will pick up between 5:00 and 7:00 PM. So please keep an eye out for a flyer between November 2nd and the 4th, and please participate in the food drive, because it's a great way to contribute in helping our community, really without leaving your home. All food donations will benefit the Cougar Food Pantry and the Community Action Center. We were just talking about how key they were in supporting services here in our city. And so support students' efforts and help end food insecurity in Pullman. For more information, you can contact gpsa period community at wsu.edu.
Great. Councilmember Parks?
Though they just brought to mind, I wanted to add that there is another food pantry in Pullman, run by Pullman Child Welfare, and I know a few weeks ago, they were sharing that their shelves were pretty empty, so in this time that we're coming into, I just didn't want to forget them as well, because they serve quite a population. Thank you.
Councilmember Guido?
No comment.
Councilmember Weller?
No comment.
Councilmember Delara?
No comment.
Councilmember Gaither?
No comment.
And my comments, I want to thank everybody who came out this last weekend for the downtown, the Halloween trick-or-treat. It was a great success, and it really highlighted some of the exciting changes that were going on, and people were already enjoying the wide sidewalks and some of the new vegetation and some of the trees that have already gone in. So it's good to see that even though we're still in the midst of construction, that downtown's getting used and people are coming out, so it was great seeing everybody there. Next up is future agenda requests. Are there any council members that would like to request a future agenda item? Seeing none, on to community comments for final action items on the agenda. This agenda item is the second or third opportunity during this meeting for the public to bring comments to the attention of elected officials. On any agenda item, the city council will take final action at this meeting, excluding items where public comment was previously accepted. Is there anyone who would like to provide comment on any final action items? Seeing none. We'll move on to our highlight, well, almost the highlight, we're getting ready for it. So next up is presentation on the financial services for quarter three, and with that, Jeff Albrecht, the Director of Finance and Administrative Services.
Thank you. Here to share with you tonight, financial performance to quarter three, so the end of September for 2024. We'll talk a little bit about trends, and you'll probably see some of these trends kind of come up as we talk through 2025 budget, so. So we'll start off, as we usually do, with the general fund. Thank you. I'll start off with the general fund. That's where we spend most of our time, is in the general fund, is it usually has the most variability and the most impacts. So here you take a look at the five-year trend line for general fund revenue. 2023 was a very strong year for revenue, which was good for us. 2024, and we've kind of talked about this the past couple of times, we've seen this level off, and you see there a slight dip compared to 2023. Good news is it's still very positive compared to budget, which is great. But again, we are seeing some of those revenues level off, or in a few cases, even dip down a little bit. This does not include any of the airport pass-through for grants, CARES funds, or Opera funds, so just know that those aren't included in the historical numbers. Property tax revenue, definitely our most predictable revenue source, but it is also the one that tends to increase at the lowest level. So again, we've talked multiple times about the 1% lid on increases along with new construction, so you see it pretty consistent. This is actually based off of actual collections. And just a reminder that we don't collect any property tax in university buildings, government buildings, or churches, which of course, in Pullman is actually a pretty significant amount of property. Sales tax, this is another good example, where 2023 was a strong year, end of 2022 actually, and end of 2023 was very strong. You obviously see the dip related to COVID impacts in 2020 and 2021. But again, now you're seeing that level off and actually take that slight dip in 2024. So again, good news is we're well ahead of budget, but again, the bad news is, is we're kind of starting to trend slightly down a little bit. So out of the nine months so far, six of them have been lower than they were the previous year, so it's a little bit of variability month to month still, but overall, we are seeing a slight decrease there. Few other general fund revenues on here, so those are other use taxes. The biggest makeup of that other use tax is utility tax. That one's been pretty consistent, and that one actually is one that does continue to trend up slightly. We are definitely seeing a fall-off in admissions tax, and that is tax on various activities. WSU activities, athletic events being the largest contributor to that, but the movie theater in town was one that contributed to that, and obviously, that's a revenue source that is there going forward, as well as a couple other activities, so. But WSU athletic events tends to be the highest one there. And something to keep in mind, the WSU athletic events, it is when a ticket is, so a couple of things on this is, one, we collect the revenues after the end of the quarter. So for example, we haven't received July through September revenues, those come in now, so there's always a delay. Additionally, it's when the ticket is purchased, not necessarily when the event occurs. So if I buy my season football tickets in March, that's when the tax is paid, not necessarily when the game is paid. So there can definitely be some variability on timing of those. Licensing and permit revenue, we have definitely seen a decline in the last really year and a half for permits for construction, particularly on the residential side of things. Intergovernmental revenues are grants, so this is grants, various revenues from other government. One that I always kind of highlight there is the marijuana and liquor tax. That one has been very consistent over the years, and tends to remain pretty consistent. And then there's fees for activities, fines and penalties. There's a little bit more variability there, but these are the fees you pay for things like Parks and Rec activities and those types of things. And then miscellaneous revenues, we've seen some pretty good growth here. A lot of that is related to, this is where the opioid settlement money comes in at. We do have some investment interest. Interest rates are starting to turn down now, unfortunately, but we do get some interest off some of our investments, and there's some other miscellaneous revenues, and there are surplus of various things that do sometimes go into that miscellaneous revenue, so a lot of different things, kind of a catch-all there. So taking a look at the general fund expenses, we've got a pretty consistent trend line here. You see, again, we are performing better to budget, which is good, but while both revenues and expenditures are better than budgeted, expenses do still exceed revenues by almost $2 million for year-to-date. So when the budget was passed, it was planned on utilizing cash balances to cover some of that, and that's good. The good news is we haven't used as much cash as we wanted to. The bad news is that the expenses do still exceed revenues at this point. And I just put on there that capital expenses make up, on the general fund make up about $733,000 of that to date. Usually on the capital side, we're a little over $1 million in the general fund, so that's what's been expended to date for our capital projects. Here's just a trend line on the capital. There's a real drop in capital expenditures during COVID. That's actually how, was pretty common, either because of uncertainty of the future or because of the inability to do capital projects. So we have seen that increase back up, relates to closer to normal levels now in 2024. We do have about $2.1 million. That includes the general fund CIP, which is a little over, about 1.2 million, not quite 1.2 million. It also includes our Metro Parks CIP projects. That money gets transferred into the general fund to support those CIP projects for parks, and that's about $900,000. So those two pieces kind of make up the capital and the general fund. Just a quick paragraph to kind of let you know what the general fund expenditures are breakout percentage-wise. Life safety is obviously our biggest one, is not uncommon, so the law enforcement and the fire make up well over 60%, so not quite two-thirds of our expenses are related to those two activities. Followed by Parks and Recreation, library, community development, and the legislative-administerative piece of it. So again, not uncommon for general fund, funds to be highly utilized for law enforcement and fire. Breaking down a little more detail, legislative expenditures, you can kind of see the trend line there. There's certainly some timings, pretty much almost dead on budget right now for year-to-date on the legislative expenses. The one area that's a little bit above budget right now is our voter and election fees. Those were came in a little bit higher than projected in 2024, but other than that, pretty much on budget. Finance and administration, there again, you see a trend line. We did start making in 2020, actually late in 2022, but primarily in 2023 and 2024, the capital expenditure for our new enterprise software. So that includes our newest software for financials, and currently we're for permit licensing and utility building that are underway, so that's why you kind of see that jump up in '23 and '24. Again, budget-wise, looking fairly positive to budget, although we do have some of those capital expenditures from that software implementation still coming in. Law enforcement, again, you see the trend line continue up. Again, they are performing better to budget by about a little over $400,000, which is good, as some of those savings compared to budget are going to be necessary to help us out going forward, but they've been pretty consistent in their trend line and expenses, and pretty similar to last year. Fire and ambulances, again, you see the trend line. This one's got a little bit more variability, so they probably saw a little less expenditures during COVID than police remain probably a little closer to normal. But again, you see the trend line up there, fairly flat from '22 to '23, and then a little bit bump up in '24. They again, though, again, are performing a little over $300,000 positive to budget, which is good. They've been pretty consistently under budget throughout the year and past years, which is good to see, able to already control expenses by that department, so that's a positive. Community and economic development, so this includes our protective inspections, Planning Division, and Economic Development. So you see a little bit more variability, some of that's been related to staffing levels at times, but again, you see performing slightly better to budget through the three quarters. Library, again, pretty consistent trend lines. Most of our department expenditures are pretty predictable. There hasn't been a lot of major changes in operations, which has allowed some stability in these. Obviously, they were down significantly in 2020 and even 2021 due to COVID restrictions and shutdowns, but year-to-date are about $100,000 positive to budget. Parks and Recreation, again, along with library, they were probably the ones you kind of saw the most suppression of expenses in 2020 and 2021, and even a little bit into early '22. We did make some concerted efforts in '23 and '24 for some capital projects on parks, probably seen a lot of those, and obviously heard reports on those over the past year. Again, they are pretty close to on budget, they're slightly better than budget through third quarter, and it's been nice seeing some of those capital projects come to fruition for parks. That's the end of the general fund. Move on to some of the other funds that we have, and we'll really focus mostly on expenses on these. Revenues, a lot of times, kind of match expenses based on the nature of the fund. So this is our streets, not serial streets. You see a major jump up, that is courtesy of the downtown project. So year-to-date, well, through September, I should say, we'd expended about $6 million to that project, so that's why you see the big jump up from a little over $4 million to a little over $9 million there. And of course, that is primarily covered through the Opera Funds. Utilities, the main variances you'll see here is, depending on the number of capital projects, the operations of the utilities is pretty consistent, but there can be a little bit of variance year-to-year based off of capital projects going on. Right now, it's positive to budget by about $1.5 million. Biggest thing, though, you'll start seeing is, depending on timing of some of those capital projects, that can create a little bit of fluctuation in that, but overall, positive to budget. Transit, again, very consistent on the operational costs. We usually see the big spike like it did in 2021, a lot of times that'll be to the capital purchase of a bus, something like that is where you'll see the big variances here. But they're performing very positive to budget so far this year, about $450,000 to the positive on budget. So again, the departments are doing a really good job of controlling expenses, which is critical as we continue to go forward. I've lumped all the internal service funds together, so this includes our equipment metal division, buildings, IT and GAS. So again, this is all services done within the city for city operations, so at the end of the day, it's in and out, right, because we're kind of paying ourselves for these services, so. But again, positive to budget. There can be some capital things, particularly on the equipment side, that can create some variances, but overall, good control of expenses and. variances, but overall, good control of expenses and good job compared to budget. And the last one I always like to share is the civic improvement fund, and really what this is, is this is the lodging tax revenue. So, this is just information on the revenues that come in from the lodging tax. Again, serious, you know, wasn't a lot of hotel stays in 2020 and 2021, started to pick up in 2022, and the good news is we've seen a real strong recovery, so '23. And this one actually does continue to trend up slightly. It's flattening out, but we're still seeing a slight uptick in lodging tax revenue, which is really good to see. Means people are coming to the community, staying in hotels and likely spending other money in town, so that's a very good thing to see. So, a few final thoughts. Most of our revenue sources are positive to budget, which is great, but also most of those revenue sources are flattening out, or even in a few cases, we're seeing a slight decline. So, that's going to be a really important trend to monitor going forward to see if that continues. But again, overall, revenues and expenses are positive compared to budget, which is great, although in the case of the general fund, the expenditures do still exceed the revenues. So, while it's better than expected, it's still not to the level that we want it to be for long-term sustainability. So, with that, I would entertain any questions?
So, any questions related to quarter three? Seeing none, thank you very much. Next up is a consent agenda. These items are listed under the consent agenda, are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion of the city council without separate discussion. Entertain a motion to read the consent agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, that if you could read the consent agenda, please.
The first item is a motion to dispense with the reading of the regular meeting minutes of October 15, 2024, and approve them as submitted. Item two, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks, electronic transfers, and ADP payroll transfers totaling $1,694,759.46. Item three, a motion to approve dispersments for UB refund checks numbered 2011-2849 through 2011-2855 totaling $442.08. Item four, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 2011-28456 through 2011-28515 totaling $2,269,178.94. Item five, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 2011-28516 through 2011-28610 totaling $292,982... Sorry. A motion to approve the transfer of sales tax revenue to CIP reserve fund for 2024 Q3 in the amount of $279,000. Item seven, a motion to accept the Canyon View Trail contract as complete. And finally, item eight, a motion to accept the Military Hill resurfacing contract as complete.
Thank you. Do any council members desire to have any items removed from the consent agenda to be discussed separately? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
With that, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. And next up, we have a regular agenda, ordinance number 2411. And with that, looks like Mike, you're on deck.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Before you tonight for your consideration is ordinance number 24-11, and this is in regards to existing business and occupation tax on gross receipts of utilities paid by providers. So, real specifically, this is not down to the user level. Think of Avista, think of, you know, telephone solid waste, think of home and disposal. So, this is paid by the provider to provide these services. So, this revenue source has been on the books since 1992, and it's codified in our city code. And in 2000, ordinance number 00-31 was passed to set the allocations for what happens to these dollars when they come in. So, 8% is what the utilities for electricity, natural gas, telephone, water and sewer are charged, and 11% is what the solid waste charges. So, when that 8% revenue comes in, it's split, two or a quarter of it goes into the streets fund, quarter of it goes into the transit fund, and 50% of it goes into the general fund. So, 2%, 2%, 4%, that makes up the eight. On the 11%, it's very similar. It's, again, 2% goes in, two of that 11% goes into the streets fund, 2% of that 11% goes into transit, and the remaining seven goes into solid waste or into general fund. So, what we're talking about here is an existing set of revenues and reallocating these splits to help balance the budget, because due to various economic constraints, when we were putting this budget together with the mayor, the general fund expenditures particularly exceeded the revenues as well as using fund balance, as we've done in the past, to balance this fund. The general fund would drop below city council's goal of 13% reserves, and that's, we're looking at reserve rates across the entire city, fund by fund. So, as you can see by this one, those existing revenues come in from the providers, and as it exists right now, you could see 25% of the top items, 18% go into the streets fund, and at the end of 2026, based on this budget, that reserve will be at 23%. Right now, in the general fund, you know, 50% and a little bit more than 50, that's 64% is going to go into the general fund, but we're predicting the reserves at the end of 2026 to be at 4%, which is a little more than two weeks of operating. While the transit fund getting that 25% and 18% at the end of 2026, their reserves under the current allocation is expected to be at 106%. So, we're looking at abundance of reserves and struggling a little bit in the general fund over here. And so, we looked at, can we move this money around and not affect staffing and not affect services as we currently provide them? And working with the finance director and the mayor, it looks like that we can if we switch to an allocation temporarily, which is what is in front of you today in this ordinance, and to maintain that 13% reserve in the general fund. You can see the two boxes, the box on the left with the streets fund remains the same. By doing this temporary redirect, the 13% reserve goal is met in the interim while maintaining a 56% reserve goal in the transit fund. So, that being the case, we're in front of you today asking you to adopt ordinance 24-11, temporarily redirecting these funds to the general fund. This was predicted in that budget that you were presented to be able to reach these goals because we wanted to bring you a balanced budget, and this is one of the ways that we wanted to be able to balance that budget without changing services or programs to the community and maintaining our existing staffing. This fills that $3.1 million shortfall and continues to meet council goals of a 13% reserve across all funds in the city at the end of 2026. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions for Mike? Councilmember Delara?
Yeah. Thank you for preparing this item, also answering my questions the past few days. So, as you know, I really care about transit, and voting on this matter weighs really heavily. So, I do have a few questions to kind of quadruple clarify for myself and also just want to help inform the public. So, the transit fund includes funding for both operations and capital projects, is that correct?
Right.
Awesome. And then, making this temporary redirection will not affect transit operations and the capital projects listed under the transit fund projects in the budget booklet, is that correct?
That's correct.
Awesome. And then, in terms of the transit fund projects that are listed in the budget booklet, that's things like the bus stop upgrade program with shelters and seats, and then also the transfer station improvement program, right?
So, all the 2025 items in the CIP across the city that was previously approved by council was rolled into this budget.
Okay.
The 2026 items were not because we're going to have another CIP again, and then we will deal with those as a budget amendment going into 2026.
Okay.
So, those items aren't in the budget yet because they're not fully approved.
Gotcha. And then, this one's like a question I haven't asked you yet. So, in the description, it says that, or there's a projected reserve for the transit fund of 56% at the end of 2026. How does the 56% get calculated?
Expected revenues, less expected expenses, and any fund reserve that was left over would be reserved.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, so that's all my questions. Thank you.
And just as a clarification, you did ask no services affected. We do have a budget in which our budget is constrained, and so I want to be careful that there could be services affected within the 2025-2026 budget, but this money removed does not affect those services.
Sure. And let me add to that, Mayor, if you could, that the streets fund includes the arterial streets and the regular streets programs, and the transit fund is transit and transit alone. And just as a reminder and for the benefit of those watching, the general fund does cover police, fire, library, parks and recreation, community development, and all financial and administrative services for the city.
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, thank you for this. I had a question, so I know in the alternatives, alternatives, just had a question, you know, one of them was, first of all, I agree with this, so I just want to make sure that I make that clear. With increasing revenues, was there a thought on how to do that?
There's a few thoughts rolling around through the department heads, and there's going to be a few things coming to you as the year comes up as far as fee changes go. But myself and our finance director, Jeff, and this may come as a surprise to him as he's hearing this, but we're going to be back in January to council because we're going to go through the revenue book that the Department of Revenue goes through, and we're going to say, here are all the revenue options available to this body. Here are the ones that we are already taking advantage of. Here's the ones that we aren't fully taking advantage of. Here's the ones that we haven't looked at, and here's all the strings attached with any of these other items.
Okay. And further decreasing proposed budget expenses, I'm guessing, similar to eliminating services or programs, correct?
Right, and that's exactly what the mayor was referring to.
Okay. And the other thing I did want to kind of mention was, you know, I believe back in, and this is the first of the alternatives, amending fund reserve target percentage, and I'd like your opinion, because I was doing some different, looking at other cities and, you know, there's some cities, New York has 8.1% of reserves. And when we were in, and that's this year, I know they're also facing some challenges, back in 2011, I think, or maybe it was 2010, Barney Waldrop had, Councilmember Waldrop had suggested us increase the reserve to 13%. And I completely trust Barney's, really very visionary, but I would also like your opinion. When we put a 13%, is that something that you, as kind of, you know, finance guru, feel is a, you know, either one, over cautious, or adequate, or not enough? So, jeopardy here, so.
I'm going to answer this question, and I'm also going to... I want Jeff to be able to tag team to this because as former finance director, I have a thought on this, and I think, looking around, I'm trying to remember. Nathan, you were on the city council when I was finance director, and so were you, Ann. And I believe I came in and I said, I don't think 13's enough. I think it should be 16% because I'm looking at two months' reserves, because that's kind of, that made me feel comfortable. We were in a different economic situation. I had just also, before getting hired here, I'd interviewed in a city that their goal was a 35% reserve, and I was like, wow, that's, you know, taking a lot of money from the taxpayers and just keeping it in the bank, you know, there's no velocity of money on that. My opinion changed after COVID, after COVID and the response, and, you know, that was the rainy day. And even though the state didn't step in and help us out on the rainy day, the feds sure did. So, coming through that and trying to balance a budget, I have adopted the 13% as the gospel as well, and I'm feeling okay with that. More is always better, at least at our house, so I always bring some of my personal feelings. But that's Mike's opinion and rebuttal.
Yeah, I think probably in less than a month on the job, before I actually had even known that that 13% was set by the council, Mike, I think, just kind of randomly asked me one day, what, you know, what's a good reserve in your mind? And I'd always in my mind had 50 days, which if you do the math, I think is 13.3 or something like that percent. So, I do, 13 is a solid number. I agree, if you start getting too high, you're just holding money and you want taxpayers to see the value for the dollars. I think if you start getting less than that, you put yourself at risk because I think the reserve does a couple of things is, one, there could be a short-term delay, so let's say something significant happens and there's a delay in money being distributed to us for property tax, for example, just, you know, using that. You want to not be able to tell people, hey, you know what, we're going to have to wait next week to get paid, right? You know, and so, you know, anything, when you start getting closer to that, you know, 30-day window, then you really start risking a short-term thing being a major disruption. The other thing, of course, is a major disruption such as COVID and some of those things, and you want to be able to maintain operations there. So, I do think 13% is a very reasonable number.
Okay, thanks. As somebody who's fiscally conservative, I appreciate both of your opinions on that. I just wanted to make sure.
Sure. And I can't underscore what Jeff said enough, too, about cash flow, that 13% helps you with those cash flow pieces, keeps our vendors happy.
Councilmember Fajarin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mike. I just have a quick question about those three bolded words on the screen there with temporary reallocation. Can you just speak a little more about how this could potentially not last through the whole budget cycle and will be keeping an eye on revenues and expenses? Is that going to be on a quarterly, monthly basis, or how is that looking?
I'm going to resist the urge to ask Jeff about it weekly because there's only so much he can handle me at a time, but we are absolutely going to monitor this on a monthly basis with the mayor, knowing that there could be timing issues, which we already discussed in Jeff's presentation. Regular quarterly reporting and, you know, working with our department heads, making sure that we're staying on budget and the revenues are hitting where we are. So, and there will always be my once-a-month updates on the sales tax because that is the most volatile piece of revenue that we have. It's about 21% of our entire budget, and if things change sales tax-wise, that could have a significant effect. So, yeah, our goal is to be able to go back to normal operations. The general fund is looking really great and be able to bring this back. That's why we did put a clause in this, so we don't have to come back and end it if it just ends, but if there's a reason to end it early, where the financial economic situation has changed or improved, well, not changed, improved, we can come back and rescind this piece and go right back to this unless there's a... go right back to this, unless there's a feeling that the Streets Fund is, you know, I got to make my little plug for the Streets Fund, and Sean's, you know, burning a hole through the back of my head back there. The, yeah, and this does not include the transportation benefit district sales tax that council is authorized to start collecting in January. But we do know that our streets, we need to be able to do some projects in there as well.
Thank you. I appreciate you expanding on that.
Councilmember Parks?
I just have a quick question, not a suggestion for change, just for my edification. So because the General Fund has so, funds so many departments, should that reserve be higher than 13%? Is the percentage commensurate with the load of the fund, if you will? So General Fund compared to Transit, for example?
I worry about the General Fund the most. Utility Fund, for instance, has a stable revenue source, and, you know, population seems to be somewhat stable. So they continue to need water and sewer and those items. That sales tax and the fact that Jeff's reporting that it's flat is a concern. The fact that the other large piece of our General Fund revenue is property tax, and if you look in your budget books, how that property tax at 1% growth, which the state has set, how that's not keeping up with inflation, and how that really kind of came back to bite us over in between these last two budgets. Because you can see that on, I'll get the page for you, but where that implicit price deflator is. We were managing, we were getting by. With a 1% property tax increase and a 2% inflationary rate, it was, you know, it was uncomfortable. But if you look at the inflationary rate over the last three, four years, that's, that's what put us, put this out of range and why I'm in front of you today. So does a higher reserve in the General Fund make sense? If I can figure out a way other than this to get it to higher than 13%, you know, that, there's that old Mike that's still sitting here, you know, liking that 16%, two months of operating. But 13% is about as low as I'm going to feel comfortable.
Okay, thank you.
With that, not seeing any other questions, I'd entertain a motion for this ordinance.
Move to adopt.
Second.
With that, if you could read the ordinance, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 24-11, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pullman, Whitman County, Washington, relating to business and occupation tax on gross receipts of utilities, amending Chapter 6.15 in Pullman City Ordinance Number 00-31 of the Pullman City Code and other matters properly related thereto.
With that, any discussion? Councilmember Delara?
Yeah, so I want to convey before I officially vote that this does weigh heavily on me because I deeply care about keeping funding to Transit as much as we can. However, I'm voting to move this forward because we need to support our existing operations across the city and have a healthy General Fund Reserve. What gives me reassurance is the temporary reallocation with the possibility of revisiting it. I also want to make it known on the record that as we move forward with our budget process, I will be more resistant to future considerations to cut Transit operations if that arises. And that's all I have to say.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Gaither?
Yeah, I'm in support of this as well. I see the fiscal necessity due to the budget shortfall. Without this redirection, I think what the General Fund reserves would only have 4% in reserves. Conversely, the Transit Fund would have 106, 100, yeah, 106%. So I think this is important, but I also think it's important to at least acknowledge that long-term, I don't know if this is sustainable, having a projected revenue shortfall of 3.1 million in 2025 covered by reserves, and then another shortfall of 2.5 million backfilled by reserves in 2026 to keep us around the 13.9%. Think it's important as we move forward to consider revenue growth and cost-saving measures. And I think you're already on top of that. But those are the two things we're just going to have to think about moving forward.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, council.
Motion passes. Next on is discussion item, and this is Budget Workshop, one of two. And with that, first, Jeff Albrecht to start us off, the Director of Finance and Administrative Services.
So thank you. You have in your packets and before you the mayor's proposed budget. So tonight is workshop number one of two for departments to present on their budget. So you see the schedule of tonight, just a couple, maybe modifications or notes on the agenda for the schedule. Legislative, executive, and city attorney are going to be pushed to next week. And everything below that, we'll kind of see how time goes tonight. So our goal would to be at least to be able to get through grants and special projects tonight. And if time allows, we'll do finance in the other funds in metro. If not, we'll move those to next week, when I think that's the only agenda item you have next week is budget hearings. So might have a little bit more time to deal with those. So again, second workshop will be on Monday at that special meeting. Right now, November 12th is set for council discussion, the public budget hearing, and that will also be when the tax levy will need to be set in order to meet the filing deadlines for the county. And then the targeted date right now for budget adoption is November 19th. So that's just kind of a review of the timelines. Just a couple of real things. Pullman, as we've talked about, similar to many cities, is really facing some cases where the revenues are increasing at a much lower rate than expenditures. And this really continues to be a challenge as we've been talking about, and really with the expenses increasing at kind of a very high rate over the last couple of years. I really do want to thank all the department heads. It's a lot of work that went into both preparing the budget as well as all the information in the book. There's no doubt that every department would really like to have more financial flexibility than this is, and that's understandable, and I can certainly sympathize with that. But they're really challenged to try to hold expenses to previous levels, which is tough as things increase. But it was a challenge that was issued to departments and really understand that, you know, it doesn't create necessarily the financial flexibility that we'd like, but it's certainly the reality of the situation. So that's what I have for just a real quick introduction.
Okay, then, fire and ambulance is first up.
Right out of the gate. Thank you, Mayor. Evening, council. Happy to present the Pullman Fire Department 25-26 Budget. So we start on page 65 with our cover, and then I'll start on page 66. So I'll start off with our activity overview. We're all hazard departments, so we provide fire protection, suppression activities. We provide advanced life support, transport services, technical rescue, fire prevention, fire investigation, and public education is what we provide. We have five main goals we presented this year. And the main one, first one, is to make the City of Pullman and Washington State University the safest place to live and work. Second goal is to utilize all local, state, and federal grants that we can get our hands on to help offstage our costs in training, equipment, and staffing. Third goal is to plan and schedule timely updates and replacements of our fire facilities, apparatus, equipment, and staffing. Our fourth goal is to constantly evaluate and improve our services and for our staffing to meet the needs of the community. So we're constantly looking at that. And then our last goal is to participate and complete a national accreditation certification, which takes years to do that. So we're kind of in that process. Our performance measurements are basically, we look at how to reduce our preventable fires and property damage. We look at how to reduce our preventable calls, because traveling to calls is one of the most dangerous things that we can be doing, go in code for things we don't need to, to the public and ourselves, to reduce false alarms. And we try to do all those things through public education constantly, trying to reduce that. Basically trying to put ourselves out of a job, but that's our goal out there is to keep people safe. And then the other thing we try to look at in reducing is time lost due to injury and sick leave to our firefighters. And we do that through our physical fitness and our medical physical programs that we have. And those are very robust at this time, so those are great things to keep going. And then we also monitor the level of ambulance billing, efficiency in the revenues that we bring in through that and our other Medicaid funds that we get. Looking at our budget highlights, so overall, our budget, like Jeff said, pretty much held to the 24 budgets. So we were a little bit under that. So our budget for 25 is $9,956,262. That's down about $82,000 from 24 budget. But we still included in there the new contract and step increases and the absorption of those three firefighters that we hired through the SAFRA grant, if you recall. So that grant went away, so that was 100% fully funded. And in '26, our budget went up slightly from '25. The salaries in our budget, or excuse me, the overtime in our budget went down about 3.8%. And we did this in order to maintain some cost expenditures. And the benefits, we did a decrease in that as well, just a, we did a three-year looking at that and just what's our anticipated expenditures for our current staffing. So looking at salaries, overtime, and benefits, that's about 77% of our budget right there. Turning to page 67, so looking at supplies, we got an 8% increase in that of about $10,000. And that's pretty much due to the inflation and our supply chain issues. So medications, we're constantly having delays in, like, IV fluid is a recent one that the hospital is experiencing the same as us. So we constantly are experiencing those. And we have the same amount in '26. Operating, our minor equipment was reduced to zero, just like everybody else. And again, tried to do efforts to try to reduce our budget. Other operating expenses, which is about 6%, that was also decreased, and again, while maintaining our mandatory fire training, our mandatory certifications, maintenance, ambulance billing services, software licensing, insurance costs, which is about $280,000, and then WITCOM dispatch service fees. And interfunds, interfunds is one of the areas that went up, and went up about 23% for us, almost $200,000. And those are things, our rates for IT, ERD, repairs, maintenance, amortization for the fire vehicles and ambulance vehicles, which those things keep going up in costs every year, facilities, and then GIS services. And then capital expenses is our last one. So those are about 3% of our budget. So they're a little higher than '24, and those include advanced medical equipment, replacing our defibrillators. So we try to replace those about every 10 years with a five-year lease, and extrication equipment, which we replace every other year, trying to upgrade those, and some gas detector equipment. And that total is about $300,000 for that. So, and with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Heston? Councilmember Gaither?
So it looks to me like because the FEMA SAFRA grant has expired, the city now bears the cost of three firefighter salaries that was previously funded externally. And to manage these expenses, reductions were made in minor equipment and operational cost. I'm concerned, or just curious to know from you, when it comes to reduced operating expenses, combined with no budget for minor equipment, could this lead to challenges in maintaining readiness, especially for the smaller but essential equipment such as axes, fire hose, and things like that, that you just need kind of at short notice?
You know, absolutely. We took a look at that whole thing, you know, and overall, like I said, you know, we took a look at the last two-to-three-year averages of what we actually spend on some of these things. And, you know, it was surprising to see where you were, because sometimes you just increase the budget every year by 5%, 6%, whatever, and inflation. But we took a look and then did that. But, you know, some of those we may need down the future. And, you know, working with the finance director and the mayor, city manager, there might be some opportunities for us to come back and maybe need some of that stuff potentially. But right now, we're going to use what we have at the moment. But it shouldn't affect what we have right now. So, but at some point, it may be a budget amendment towards the end of the year. We just don't know. But we just want to do our part. Good question, though.
Councilmember Weller?
You know, Chief, you didn't have to leave us to save us money. You know this, right?
I know, I know, Nathan.
Well, I just wanted to say we'll miss you. But I do appreciate you've always been a really good team player for, you know, city. And, you know, we're going to miss some good leadership. So thank you for the budget, and just haven't had a chance to say we'll miss you.
Well, good. Yeah, this is my last time of doing this, for sure. I'm not going anywhere, but I'll be around. Always free advice, so. Other questions?
So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, next up will be police. Chief Opsnorth?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So I'm here to talk a little bit about the Police Department budget, which will be on page 97 of your budget document. So first, I'd like to start off with saying that our agency works to serve and protect all persons and property in the City of Pullman, including enforcement of city code and state and federal laws. Pullman PD maintains peace and order, assures personal safety, and provides assistance to citizens experiencing a wide variety of circumstances. So as you see in your packet, Pullman Police Department consists of 48 full-time employees and two volunteers. And it's broken down into 33 commissioned police officers, 11 records and support staff, and four code enforcement officers. So in police operations, out of those 33 commissioned police officers, we have about 2/3 assigned to patrol, working three shifts and providing 24/7 police coverage. We have three detectives overseen by one detective sergeant. They handle, investigate all major crimes and those investigations that require some specialized training. We have one school resource officer that works within the Pullman School District, teaches the DARE curriculum, keeping it real curriculum, and really building positive relationships with the youth and families in our community. One thing I'm proud to mention is, is this year, Pullman Police Department established a sexual assault investigative team. This is officers that have volunteered to serve on this team and participate in special training courses for sexual assault response and investigation. And this team reflects our commitment to providing professional and compassionate service and value that we place on bringing those offenders to justice. We have one administrative sergeant, Sergeant Greg Umbright, who oversees our community programs and outreach efforts in alignment with our community-oriented policing approach. For our records and support staff, we have record specialists staffing our records department and our front desk and our public lobby 24/7, providing records entry, fingerprinting services, licensing, and public record services, helping walk-in customers, answering the phones, monitoring the holding facility. We have one full-time administrative assistant providing executive-level support for me and the department. We have one technology specialist keeping our police technology up and running, and just making sure all of our specialized equipment, radios, computers, our software specific to the Police Department is working as we need. We have a property and evidence specialist managing all of our property and evidence and compliance with state and federal laws. And then we have our code enforcement officers. We have three code enforcement officers and one code enforcement supervisor. They're primarily tasked with animal control, parking enforcement, and also nuisance ordinance. And they are also certified child passenger safety technicians, something that not everybody knows that. So fully staffed, our salary and benefits for our department and our budget, that's about 70% of our budget right there. So another thing that's really important to me is training. Our training costs unfortunately have increased due to so many state-mandated training requirements just to maintain police officer certification, but also all of the, all of the duties that were assigned, more and more have gone from best practice to now a state-mandated, you have to have training to do this certain job, for example, interviewing children. So one of the, one of the things that makes it a little bit difficult for the Police Department is department is much of the state mandated training is provided by the academy, the Basic Law Enforcement Academy and the State Training Center, which is located in Burien. Makes it very difficult for us to send all of our officers to Burien to receive that training, because the costs just go up when we start traveling. So one of our goals is to, as often as we can, to have our staff trained up to the level of an instructor, and then we can do all of our training for the rest of our officers in-house, and that's been pretty successful. So our police officers do average about 100 hours of training a year. By state mandate, we're required to have at least 24 hours of in-service training. Two of those hours is critical incident training, and then there's additional hours that we have to put in under the Law Enforcement Training and Community Safety Act. So, so we get a lot of training. The training budget for us that we're looking at right now is about 229,000 dollars. That's only about 2 percent of our budget. But training is incredibly important to law enforcement. I would argue that a highly-trained police department is the foundation of a professional organization. A well-trained department builds trust within the community, prevents biased policing, improves decision-making, helps stay current and responsive to modern challenges, improves officer safety, and reduces a city's liability. Also in the budget, as you can see, is kind of a category I just refer to as law enforcement costs. That covers about 15 percent of our budget. Those are things like services, criminal justice services provided by Whitman County for court costs, for prosecution costs, for misdemeanor jail costs and public defenders. Also things like paying for our dispatch services through Whitcom. Those are all, comes out of our budget, and that covers about 15 percent of our budget. And then another 10 percent of our budget is just our interfund rates. Those costs provide just our basic needs, like providing us building and the maintenance in our building, providing vehicle maintenance and vehicles for our patrol officers and our city IT support. So as you know, the Pullman Police Department embraces the community-oriented policing model, which encourages active community engagement and cooperation. To that end, we look forward to continuing with our community engagement and meeting our community one-on-one at community events, as well as hosting National Night Out and inviting those interested to participate in the annual Pullman Police Citizens Academy. So in summary, I'd just like to say the 2025 budget will allow the agency to continue to provide the level of service that the city of Pullman has come to know and expect by maintaining our staffing levels and services, prioritizing training opportunities and skills development, and engaging community as partners in public safety. So that's what I have to speak on. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Chief Opps-North? Councilmember Gaither?
How much, what's the budget allocation for trainings, again?
For training? It's about 2 percent of our budget, and it's, I think the dollar amount was about 229,000.
Okay, and those training costs have increased due to state mandated requirements for officer certifications, and, man, 229,000 dollars just sounds like a lot of money to me. I would like to hear some of the area, just a little bit more about the areas of training. Words I would like to hear, de-escalation?
Okay.
Or, um, community policing, that's one of my favorite. Hopefully, you're getting trainings around those areas.
So the CIT training, for example, over the last six years, the topics have been for the two-hour training that we're required to do, de-escalation of people in crisis, responding to those on the autism spectrum, working with people with traumatic brain injuries, officer wellness, understanding post-traumatic stress disorder and substance use disorders. Some of the additional training under the Law Enforcement Training and Community Safety Act, patrol tactics, which covers de-escalation as well, the historical intersection of race and policing, alternatives to booking, implicit and explicit bias, and understanding local cultures. And so it just goes on and on. For independent investigations, anytime that there's a critical incident within our jurisdiction, we're required to activate our members that are part of a investigative response team, which is a, we have a police area law enforcement critical incident response team. And so our detectives that are assigned to that are required to have additional training in basic homicide investigation, interviewing and interrogation, violence, de-escalation, and mental health training with an additional eight hours in a number of topics that could include advanced homicide investigation, advanced interviewing, officer involved shooting investigation, in custody death investigation, excited delirium and positional asphyxia, bloodstained pattern, or crime scene photography. So that's just a number of them. And then just the amount of training we have, so many of them are just recertifying our instructors. So if we have a firearms instructor, for example, and we do firearms training six times a year at a minimum, we have to maintain our firearms instructor certification. So while we don't have the state, the state price tag for each officer to go to training, because we can do it in-house, we still have to make sure our instructors maintain their certification. And there's a number of those instructors that always have to repeat their certification, whether it's firearms, control tactics, emergency vehicle operations, you name it. There's just always this reoccurring training and recertification to maintain our level of certification.
Sounds fantastic. As a father with a son with autism, I couldn't be more excited about you and the department receiving those types of training. So I think it all sounds fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Weller?
Yeah, on, on what Councilmember Gaither was saying, you know, the, the training, continual growth, I've always been very impressed with, you know, police department. And you've continued along that vein. I know the, you know, the mandates are not, you know, it's tough to swallow, but I know you would and the department would probably be doing that on your own anyway, because I've seen that, I've seen the passion, not only in educating your own force, but also in the citizens, helping them to understand all of the challenges you face. And, you know, I greatly appreciate that, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
And I guess I could add some of the price that we're seeing, where we're seeing the increase, is because when we're required or when we do go to that state training, in the past, it's always been free. We just had to pay for the travel costs and the housing, or the staying in a hotel when you're in Burien. Now the state is forwarding the cost of that tuition, we could call it, onto our department. And so whereas before it would be free training, now to get somebody into a, a basic class, they might charge the department a thousand dollars to go. So that's where we're seeing the big increase.
Councilmember Guido?
Just, just an observation and a comment. When you read off all of those things, it's just so educational to hear the complexity of what an officer, a policeman is, or police person is expected to be able to manage and have some working knowledge to navigate. So, you know, my immediate reaction was 2 percent of your overall budget doesn't seem like enough to me on training, but I realize, you know, that's a, that's a balancing, that's a balancing act when you're looking at a heavy labor force and keeping them up to date. So I applaud you for continuing to do, get the, train the trainer to try and create those efficiencies. Not an easy thing to do, and our world is getting that much more complex, so I appreciate everything that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Agreed with that, Chief. Thank you very much. Next up, Library Service Director, Dan Owens.
Thank you, counsel, and thank you for this opportunity. The library starts on page 75 with the organization chart, and then on page 76, we begin. And I'll open by saying our mission statement and vision statement are all listed right there. I'll be, in the interest of time, I'll just say we are committed to excellence in public library service for the city of Pullman and our entire community. If you go down towards the bottom of that page, you see our department goals, and you heard me mention these last year, but these came out of our 2023 Fall Community Survey, which the number one goal was increased size of physical collection, then increased size of electronic collection, more programs for adults with a focus on fun and interactive programs, more spaces for youth to play and learn, and then more open hours. And those goals, as I mentioned afterwards, really represent new targeted efforts on our part in addition to our ongoing efforts in materials, programs for all ages and things of that nature. Moving on to the next page, you can see our performance measurement, our community feedback. As I mentioned, we did our fall survey in 2023. We expect another in-depth community feedback engagement process to occur next year, which I'll mention again in a minute. We have many, many circulation statistics, programs, statistics, I'm sure, I think every department can provide a lot of statistics, but after a big increase that we saw in 23, we are continuing to see that in 2024. Circulation, 6 percent year-to-date program participation has increased 13 percent year-to-date, with somewhere around 15,000 individual attendees to library programs so far this year. Our other performance indicators that we take a look at, new library accounts have increased, computer sessions, Wi-Fi, up 38 percent, and then overall visits as well. Moving on to our budget, salaries and wages, we have a small increase in 25, and that's the non-represented staff and union contract mandated wage increases. That increase is a little smaller due to some staff turnover, new staff come in at a lower step than we would otherwise have seen. In 2026, we will be undergoing contract negotiations for the libraries' union. That represents 12 of our 14 permanent staff members and represents a little over 63 percent of our wage costs for all of our employees, so that is something that may come before council in 25, as it usually, or will, as it always does. Our benefits costs went down quite a bit in this budget. That's a little bit more accurate forecasting. Some of our newer staff members took different benefit selections that lowered our costs, so that was significant savings for us, and that actually occurred this year as well. So we're coming in quite a bit under budget on benefits for this year, which of course is wonderful. As noted by others, minor equipment, we don't have anything in there. Our operating expenses are right in line with where they've always been. Our interfund charges, which is the fees charged to the library for things like facilities, IT, et cetera, have decreased somewhat, and I really have to thank IT and facilities for talking to us about that. And I'd say we actually on the IT side have more and better computers than we did a year ago, yet we've saved money, because Morgan really was creative in how he looked at our licensing costs and all of that. So that's a big plus for us, and we really appreciate that. I'll mention capital in a minute, but on the next page, you can see the council goals and priorities and how we contribute to that. And I would say, you can read all that, but I've particularly, I've had the chance to talk about welcoming and the councilable goals with that, with Councilmember Delira. We do make roughly 2,000 new library cards every single year, and we're really proud of that in a community with a high turnover. That's an extraordinary number, though, for a community our size, and we're very proud of often being the first place that people interact with city government, and we're proud to be part of the city government and provide excellence in service to our newer residents and our younger residents who are getting new cards as well. Overall, for us and the operating budget, we, 25 is about a 1 percent decrease, so a very small decrease compared to 24. But we do have our two capital programs that you can see listed there, projects, the first being replacing our library software. We have actually received, we're already working on that, to implement that in 26. That should be a significant improvement for the public with the online catalog that places people go. It'll look a lot better, look a lot better on your phone, be better for staff, and we expect at least somewhere in the neighborhood of a 20 to 40 percent cost savings in our annual cost for that. So we're very happy to be moving forward with that. And then later in the year, we will be working on a services and facility assessment study, which is not something library has done in the past, but we're very excited to move forward with that, and that will be part of the in-depth community engagement and feedback process that we're looking forward to, towards the end of the year. And with that, that's all I have to say and note there, and I would take any questions.
Councilmember Weller?
More of a comment. You know, Dan, I, I remember being on the, on the board, and we were always wondering, was there leadership to stand or be where Joanna was? And, I mean, we were, when I first met you, I was like, this guy, he's the guy. And you have absolutely outdone yourself. I mean, it's just, the leadership has been very impressive, and you've kept with the times. You know, I've, I go to libraries all the time, and there's a lot of libraries who are struggling to not only create a budget that, you know, is, is sustainable, which you've done absolutely each time, but also keep up with the different media, the programs, and collaboration with different organizations in the community. It is absolutely a community jewel right there in downtown, and you have 110 percent made that happen, and I just, we're very fortunate. So thank you for this, and that's the only comment, no question.
Thank you for that. I'll just say I learned a lot from Joanna, and it's really the whole staff of the library and the team of the city that allow us to offer that service. And I meant to mention, and I will mention, that our additional goals, you know, we are trying to reach those at all times, and we're looking for ways to invest in those, but with this budget, I can confidently say we're maintaining staffing, we're maintaining existing programs. When I talk about the things that are, have been increasing, that will continue next year. We're not having to reduce hours, we're not having to reduce those program investments. So I'm sure every department can look for targeted investments in new initiatives, but with this, I can be very confident in saying we'll be providing the same level of service, if not a little more, next year than we are this year.
Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. I just wanted to second what, what Councilmember Weller said, but also just to give a shout out to the Board of Trustees, of which I'm an ex-officio member. But the information you share with us in that, in those meetings, is so detailed but not overwhelming, and when Nathan made mention that you really do keep up in the industry, and you do, and with things like materials challenges, not just in the state, but around the country, and trends in library, and you talk to other library folks, and you do go to some trainings, and sometimes you just reach out to people on your own. So I think that has a lot to do with the success of our library and your attention to what the demands are, so expanding, you know, the, the children's programming by dedicating a, a staff member to doing that, and Rachel's just done so great, and so just wanted to say kudos, because our library really is a community center, and, you know, most people don't take advantage of it as much as they could, but the online services are wonderful as well. So just thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Guido?
Dan, thank you for the budget presentation, and I just want to say my personal experience has been great at the library. Your customer service is always excellent, and I appreciate the assurance that you're giving that, that level of customer service and expectations in terms of what's available and keeping up to date is going to be maintained. And I think we're very fortunate to be in an academic community that values libraries, so it doesn't surprise me too much that we get that many new library cards, because as, we're very lucky to have a community that supports the value of libraries, and other communities are struggling to maintain their libraries and are fighting to keep them alive, and more and more research is being shown that those small rural areas that do not have a library, they're seeing a decrease in community have a library, they're seeing a decrease in community involvement, and democratic principles are dropping more and more. So you hold an important place in the, in the community and want to maintain that level of service.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gaither?
Yeah, I just want to say, the spaces for youth to play and learning in the wintertime, you know, has just been vital for parents with young families. So couldn't be more grateful for the dedicated areas for youth and all of the engaged, engagement opportunities that they have. Two questions. One, I think, might be more for you, Mr. Mayor, because I'm just trying to wrap my head around the decisions for most of these departments to exclude minor equipment purchases. Now, I get how, you know, that's going to yield short-term savings, but I just wonder if this is going to lead to like a maintenance backlog if equipment becomes outdated or if something fails unexpectedly. So maybe we can table that and talk about it later.
And, and that's, and, and that's something that I had to make certain decisions in, in the budget-cutting process, and the things that you'll see in it is that in order to preserve, in order to preserve positions, I did look at the minor equipment, I looked at training, I looked at overtime. I mean, there's, excuse me, a number of areas that I, excuse me, areas that I, that I did look, and, and that minor equipment is one that you'll see it's zeroed out across the board. That's something that we then want to, as, as we move forward in the budget and in the evaluations, working with Jeff and, and the quarterly, that's when we'll be able to come back to council and say, things have improved, so we want to add these things back in. And so that's, that's where we're, we're hoping to be able to go, but, but mine is, I had, I had to provide you a balanced budget, and that's, and that was sleepless nights that I, that I went through with this, and, and it was hard for, really hard on staff, too.
It seemed like everybody did what they could and did a great job, so just wanted, thanks for that clarification. My only question is, in the departmental goals or the department goals, more open, more open hours? Just curious to know what you mean by that. Are you all considering expanding operational hours or just like for specific events or?
Yeah, so that is something, we're currently open fifty-three hours per week. Last year was fifty-two hours, and one thing, feedback we've received consistently and in our, our survey was more hours and particularly more weekend hours. And since we're open ten to six on Saturday, we were looking at Sunday hours. So we went through a pretty extensive exercise to kind of game that out, and what would that scheduling look like? And for those of you who have done scheduling, adding a seventh day is quite difficult. Right now, with the minimum staffing policies we have, you just shift a person one day from like they, instead of working Friday, they work Saturday. When you add Sunday, you add in a whole new kind of level of staffing requirements, and the least expensive option we could see would have resulted in us asking for a six percent budget increase, and that would be really kind of degrading the staffing levels and the service standards. Probably keeping our current staffing levels and service standards would have been a thirteen to fifteen percent request for a budget increase. We didn't feel that was a feasible request. I talked to the Board of Trustees about it, and I can certainly share the memo I prepared for them because it was something we were really interested in, and the community says, hey, we really want this. Looking at that level of a budget increase or a funding request, and that would be nothing increased anywhere else. So the community also asked for more materials funding, and that was actually a higher priority. So when we came in with our request, that's what we targeted. So that is kind of that thought process there, and I will share that memo with you. And I can say what we did do was we added an hour on Friday evening, which doesn't sound like a lot, but just to be brief about it, we usually, we previously close at 6:00 PM on Friday, and we actually can look at our checkout numbers and see how many things are checked out. And what we found out was all these people were rushing in just before six. They got off work, they're trying to check their things out. So we added an hour, which cost us a total budget impact of around $2,000 for the rest of the year. And now that is one of our busiest hours of the week is from six to seven on Friday. And since we're already open ten to seven Monday through Thursday, we just took that same scheduling model and applied it to Friday. So that is a step we took to address that goal. Someday down the road, we may look at Sunday hours again, but at this time, I, we didn't feel it was a feasible request.
Thank you.
Great.
For those listening, we're now open until 7:00 PM on Fridays.
Seven PM on Friday, yeah.
That's right.
Absolutely.
No, we have incredible department heads, and as you can tell, just with, with the informative and the thought process that their, each department is going through as, as they've thought about this and how they can provide the services to the community. It's, I definitely appreciate it. So thank you very much, Dan. And next up, we have our parks and facilities. I guess we're going to start with our recreation manager, so Megan Vining.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Mayor, City Councilmembers. I'm Megan Vining. I'm the Recreation Manager with the Recreation Department. Before presenting the '25-'26 budget, I would like to first recap the last biennium with a few accomplishments for the Recreation Department. In 2023, and we have continued in 2024, to successfully introduce and make changes to many new youth sport leagues, youth camps, classes, and new enrichment activities, which have received overwhelming positive feedback and participation. In 2023, our department served over fifty-two thousand participants, and that transcended into recording over eighty-six thousand participant attendance. We added more than four hundred new account holders to our system in 2023 with a total of over forty-two thousand total account holders in our system. Moving forward to the 2025 budget, as you can see in the budget book, page eighty is the org chart for parks, recreation, and facilities. Page eighty-eight and eighty-nine is the participant recreation abstract. Participant recreation budget begins on page eighty-nine, and page ninety lists the approved FTEs for the Recreation Department. The budget for recreation is broken into four areas. That's the senior center, recreation services, aquatic center, and rainy pool operations. This budget is in line with our current actuals with our '23 and '24 budget and reflects an increase in not only revenue and expenditures with the expansion of programming for our department. You'll hear a common theme with each individual program area, that there is an increase in operating and program supplies, salaries, wages, and benefits, like many of the department heads that I've already presented today. These are directly related to the current economy and also for us with the increase of levels of services with programs offered and also our participation numbers. With this proposed budget, we are able to continue to implement, coordinate, and supervise a comprehensive year-round recreation program that includes opportunities for a variety of interests and ages. We strive to continue to enhance the quality of life for residents by providing opportunities for the public for involvement and enjoyment of recreation, lifelong learning, special events, swim lesson instruction, water safety education, public open swim, and facility rentals for all ages in a fiscally responsible manner while being creative and responsive to current trends, public requests, and ideas. I will start with the senior center specifically. Through the third quarter of 2024, we are continuing to see excellent participation numbers in activities and trips. Our current participations are over ten thousand. Our COA meals that are offered on Tuesdays and Fridays have served more than forty-five hundred seniors, and sign-ins at the senior center have increased with over six thousand so far. These numbers are on target to exceed our 2023 numbers. We also continue to have a strong partnership with the Pullman Senior Citizens Association and its board. The PSCA currently has roughly over two hundred and eighty members. The operating supplies for the senior programming budget has an increase from '23-'24 as we continue to increase programming through quarter three. The active adult section has collected more than forty-one thousand in active adult programs' revenue compared to twenty-seven thousand in 2023. This is a direct result of the increased level of programming provided by the coordinator. Our inter-fund rates, such as IT and ERD rates, reflect an increase. Twenty-twenty-five has an increase of over seventeen thousand, and twenty-twenty-six budget has another four thousand increased over twenty-twenty-five. The total budget for the senior center for 2025 is two hundred and fifty-six thousand four hundred and twenty-three, and the twenty-twenty-six budget for the senior center is two hundred and sixty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-nine, an increase of roughly or almost $10,000 over 2025. Moving on to the recreation services section, we do continue to see an increased number of participants in our recreation programs. To date, we have served almost twenty thousand participants, and that's just in the recreation section, and that transcends over to seventy-seven thousand participations in our programs. Staff continue to increase programming based on information on trends, requests, ideas, feedback from the community members. Staff continue to develop partnerships with local businesses to increase economic development as well with our programming, and we continue to collaborate with Pullman School District with facility uses for our programming. Directly for recreation services, our salaries and wages reflects an increase with salaries, wages, and benefits, as well as with minimum wage for '25 and '26. This increase in salaries also, excuse me, reflects increase in expanded levels of programming, specifically with youth and adult sports, our new middle school after-school program, and our after-school youth open gym staffing that's offered to the community. And all of these are following with our City Council goals and our comprehensive plan. Our overall supplies budget has an increase in program supplies to reflect the current climate of inflation of prices, as well as the increase in programming offered to the community. Inter-fund rates, such as IT, building, ERD, and our insurance and liability rates, account for over $70,000 increase for our '25 and '26 budgets. Twenty-twenty-five budget for recreation services is one million four hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight, and our twenty-twenty-six budget for recreation services is one million five hundred, excuse me, one million five hundred one thousand eight hundred and twenty-one. That is an increase of eighty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-three for 2026. Most of that is reflected in inter-fund rates, insurance, liability, and salaries, and wages, and benefits again. Moving on to the aquatic center section, with the current inter-local agreement with the Pullman School District expiring on August 31st, 2025, the 2025 budget reflects a program-wide cut of thirty percent across all revenue and expenditures. As we continue through contract negotiations, and if a contract is finalized, the 2025 and 2026 budgets will be updated. Despite the current contract situation, our staff remain committed to providing our current levels of service while also looking at ways to increase or adjust our current programming with information on current trends, requests, ideas, and feedback from our members, our patrons, and community members. Staffing reflects an increase due to the increase, as many other areas, with salaries, wages, minimum wage increase, and the benefits for '25 and '26. Insurance and liability rates have an increase of about $9,000 over 2024, and our inter-fund rates, building, ERD, ERD MNO rates are up thirty-three thousand from 2024. Our 2025 budget for the aquatic center is seven hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred and forty-nine. Our 2026 budget for the aquatic center is zero. Rainy pool operations, this budget is very similar to our 2023 and 2024 with a slight increase in salaries, wages, and the minimum wage increase for '25 and '26. Our IT and communication rates increased approximately $1,000 for '25 and '26. The 2025 budget for rainy pool operations is ninety-eight thousand one hundred and ninety, and our 2026 budget for rainy pool is a hundred and two thousand and fifty-three dollars, an increase of about $4,000 over 2025. For capital expenditures, our recreation division has five projects total, and four of them are directly related to enhance the safety and security of facilities and participants for 2025. Those total approximately $131,144. I do wish to extend my gratitude to all of our dedicated parks, recreation, facility staff, our city staff, administration, mayor, city council, volunteers, community partners, sponsors, and residents who make our programs and facilities thrive. As we move through the rest of 2024 and into '25 and '26, we remain committed in our goals to create a vibrant and inclusive community through exceptional recreation experiences. Thank you. That is all that I have. If you have any questions.
With that, any questions? Councilmember Weller?
Just want to tell you that I hear quite a bit from some older individuals about how much they appreciate, you know, the senior center and the programs that you have there. One in particular, Midge, is a good, good friend of mine at Planet Fitness, and she just can't, can't speak enough about how she appreciates what you're doing, Megan, and wanted to, to tell you that. And the amount of classes, I don't know how you do it, but thank you for, I don't have children, but, I mean, I can only imagine if I were to grow up at this time, the amount of opportunities. So thank you for what you're doing.
Yeah, thank you for letting me know. I'll definitely pass it along to Lundy. She's been with our department just a little over three years. She has taken that program that really suffered during COVID and had a really slow comeback, and literally in the last year has just improved leaps, bounds, lots of activities. So they've had some really great programs. For the rest of us, we have eight full-time staff that put together a sixty-two-page guide, and it takes a village, and it takes all the full-time staff, and we have an amazing parks and recreation family of part-time staff that we couldn't execute the programs without all the staff that we have, whether it's youth sports, adult sports, the aquatic center staff, reading. It's monumentous for all of us, and thank you so much.
Councilmember Fitzgerald?
Thank you so much, Megan, for the information presented today. I just want to say I'm a big fan of recreational services. I recently read that they're among the most important things that cities can do for both young people and seniors, and recreation is just so cheap compared to other service, services and what we get from investing in those. And I just want to mirror just how key or echo what's been said about the Pullman Aquatic Center and how it's so key to our community. Council has received multiple emails from constituents saying things like, "As a retired individual on fixed income, I rely heavily on the pool for physical fitness, necessity at my age, and have made some wonderful friendships, so it's also important for mental health." So I just want to just, just again, highlight how key of a resource that is for that community, and I know we're working hard to make sure that we retain it. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and, and related to the aquatic center on that piece, that's something that we are continuing to, to work on the discussion. You'll notice in the budget, there, there is no budget item within this budget, September on of next year, related to it. If we look at, if we look at 2023, the school district's contribution to the aquatic center was eighty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-one, and our contribution was four hundred and twenty-five thousand three sixty-two. So it gives you a perspective of our, our contribution is, you know, over $400,000 into the aquatic center. With that, Mike?
Sure, and just to clarify that to council, when the mayor says contribution, we're taking into account the revenues and the expenses. So when he says our contribution, that means over and above what the revenues are covering for expenses.
Yeah, and that, and that, and within that number, we don't, we don't include what the cost is for Megan's and Kurt's supervision, finance, HR, payroll, those numbers aren't, aren't included in, in that piece. So that just gives you a feel for, as we're having conversations of a, and this would come back after this budget is done, as, as we're having these conversations. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then next up is our Parks and Facilities Director, Kurt Damon.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Before I present the, or present the '25-'26 budget, I'd like to highlight a couple of areas as we created this budget, and some of those are based around city council goals. One being city department visioning, which is advancing short- and long-term city department planning, which includes facilities and programs designed to improve community quality of life, and we do that through our parks, paths, trails, and open spaces. And then also a couple bullet items under community support and collaboration, environmental sustainability, and taking advantages of, so new opportunities were presented, and then also water use, making sure we're, we're meeting those restrictions that the city put in place last year. The '25-'26 The '25, '26 budget, aside from being financially challenged, as you've already heard, kind of has a different feel from our previous '23, '24 biennium. That was heavily focused on completion of Prop 1 and Prop 2 projects that our Finance Director mentioned earlier. A lot of those were pretty staff-intensive, include renovation of seven playgrounds, five picnic shelters of various sizes, demo of a couple buildings and cleanup. That kind of took staff maybe away from some of our routine things and smaller projects that we maybe put on the shelf. So, as I looked at '25 and '26, I think we'll, as I stated, a little more routine and getting back to some of our basics that we did. So, I've got seven items, our budget's here to present, and I'm going to go in a little different order than maybe what was on the agenda here that I think will flow a little easier for you. As Megan mentioned, we've got our organizational chart on page 80. Moving to page 81 is our cemetery budget. This includes the maintenance and operation of city cemetery, as well as Oddfellows, which is on West Main over by Sunnyside. A lot of people kind of forget about that one. So, we really tried to operate and maintain in a cost, cost-efficient and visually appealing manner. Some of our primary duties, functions at the cemetery, kind of start with our spring cleanup culminating with presentation on Memorial Day, mowing, trimming, and necessary care throughout the week, irrigation repair and maintenance, work with our city clerk here on selling of graves to the public. And then also, we just recently, or this week, will complete our cemetery expansion project. So, staff next year will be able to start kind of plotting out those different sections there and hopefully adding some irrigation to that area as well. Budget highlights changes in our supplies. We had a minimal increase. As I just mentioned, the expansion project, hopefully we can add some trees and shrubbing there, as well as address some irrigation needs. In our operating expenses, we reduced our professional services as we have in-house staff now that do our opening and closing of graves, so we're not contracting that out to a third party. Interfund rates, we do have an increase there in our equipment rental division for charges and amortization and repairs and maintenance to equipment. So, '25 cemetery budget is $179,955, or a 52.7% decrease from '24, and really that difference has to do with the completion of our expansion project and, and reduction in capital. And the 2026 budget for cemetery, $188,282, or a 4.6% increase from '25. So, moving over to page 83 is our Cemetery Expansion Fund. This fund is, provides for cemetery expansion and other capital improvements. The revenues for this fund consist of fees, contributions, and investment earnings that are transferred in from the Cemetery Endowment Care Fund, which I'll go to shortly here. So, the '25 budget, we have $17,089, which is a final payment will be made to the contractor who performed the earthwork as part of the expansion project. And what that is, is the remaining balance due to him or a 5% retainage for those expenditures. And what that is, is we'll hold that until permanent site stabilization is achieved, which is determined by the Department of Ecology. So, the '25 budget is, as I said, $17,089, and then in '26, there is no expenditures expected. Moving to page 85 is our Cemetery Endowment Care Fund. This fund was established in 1965 to provide a corpus whose earnings are to be used for ongoing maintenance, upkeep, and capital improvements of the cemetery. Revenues are generated from a portion of cemetery grave sales, so when a grave is sold, 30% of that grave sale goes into this fund. So, expenditures for next year, so we get, we take that $17,089 I mentioned in the expansion fund, it comes from the care fund, gets transferred over, paid out at the expansion fund. So, we have $17,089 in '25, and nothing budgeted in '26 is that this fund is pretty well depleted after that expansion project. Next, moving to page 86 is our Community Improvement Fund. Two components in this fund is weed control and environmental preservation. So, weed control is basically the abatement of weeds on city property and right-of-ways, and also along our waterways. We do have a percentage of that that gets reimbursed from the street fund. And then environmental preservation is where we deal with solid waste and litter control issues, removal, disposed debris, city right-of-ways or other properties that get left behind. Example could be a homeless camp or something that gets abandoned that we have to go in and clean up. Mowing of our right-of-ways, clearing grasses and branches to improve appearance, sidewalk clearance of overhanging vegetation. Primarily, we kind of focus around school zones in August as kids are going back to school, making sure stop signs and those type of things are, are visible. And then we also assist Fire Department as they go around in the summer and clear out around fire hydrants, and we help clean up the debris from there as well, as well as some of the downtown beautification functions are recognized in this budget. Another function kind of our community improvement is we aid and coordinate police code enforcement officers as well as community development staff in, as they're related to city ordinances or infractions or complaints that we get there. So, supplies, our budget changes for the upcoming year, supplies reflects an increase in chemical costs. Professional services, we have a slight increase as working with Phoenix Conservancy. One thing we've done the last several years out at Conservation Park is we've brought in about 70 goats for about four or five days where they chew down vegetation and noxious weeds in hopes of bringing back natural prairie grasses. And we are also then awaiting kind of proposal from the Phoenix Conservancy on something on this hillside below City Hall here and what we can do to improve that and cut down some of our maintenance costs. So, looking forward to working with them on that. So, the 2025 budget for community improvement is $112,752, or 10.1% increase from '24. And the '26 budget for community improvement, $118,923, or a 5.5% increase. Moving to page, excuse me, 91, this is our Parks and Facilities budget, where the bulk of our maintenance happens, our operations happen. This budget has five subcategories, first being is our swimming pool maintenance. So, that's providing maintenance at the Aquatic Center, where it's daily checking of chemicals, balancing pools, maintenance on pumps, chlorinators, heaters. And then at Rainy Pool is the seasonal preparation, starting in the springtime, draining those pools, cleaning them up, and getting them ready for the summer swim season. We recently did just place a new vinyl liner in our lap pool down at Rainy Pool, so I'm kind of expecting we'll have some reduced maintenance hours down there, where generally that's a concrete, was a concrete pool that we painted every year, and now with that liner, we won't have to do that. So, I think our maintenance will actually go down there. So, then our, under the Parks is kind of our general Parks budget, which is our largest. This includes mowing and maintenance of city-owned parks, our RV park, and other public properties. Also includes garbage collection and litter pickup in our parks and city properties, which a portion is reimbursed from stormwater. Also includes maintaining playgrounds and ballfields in a safe and pleasant manner, control and maintenance of our irrigation in our parks, maintaining those, mowing our city paths and trail system to keep those appealing. And then also maintain kind of our high visible areas along Grand Avenue, Davis Way, out here at City Hall in front of the, the buildings and the planters, and just, you know, these high visible areas that present a good image for the city. And then also provide for beautification and maintenance of the downtown. You know, as, as we started to see trees, plants, soon next year will be hanging baskets, planter beds, we'll, we'll be focusing a lot of attention down there as well. We also provide snow removal of our city parking lots, sidewalks, paths, and other city properties, and then also in the springtime, coordinate gravel pickup with our MNO department, which is reimbursed from our street fund. Another function of the Parks budget is street trees. This is maintenance and care of our trees and our right-of-ways, so working with our residents and contracted services for removal if necessary. Also kind of work with our transit, Fire Department, Pullman Disposal, MNO, as they point out, areas as they're driving where they're encountering some problems or maybe hitting equipment on tree branches that we'll go out and remove. Water towers, providing maintenance and landscaping around several of our water towers and well sites are another function, which is reimbursed by the Water Utility Fund. New to the Parks budget this year will be the functions and operations of Lawson Gardens. Previously, that was in its own fund. At the request of the State Auditor's Office, those functions will now be rolled into the Parks as well. So, this includes planning and maintenance of annual flowers, the perennial gardens, the rose gardens, zero scape, and mowing of our turf areas. So, for budget highlights and changes the upcoming year, we have an increase in salary, wages, and benefits of about $146,000. Again, a lot of this has to do with the transferring of Lawson Gardens, and then program salary increases, COLAs, and increase in minimum wage. Supplies obviously are up a little bit with the transfer of Lawson Gardens operations. Other operating expenses, all liability and capital insurance is recognized out of Parks budget this year, kind of to streamline some of that. It used to be kind of sprinkled out amongst some of our other budgets. Interfund rates, increase in IT Equipment Rental Division and GIS charges. And then we have the capital expenditures on page 92 that were previously approved by council. So, 2025 budget for General Parks is $2,835,903, or a 39.8% increase from '24. Again, Lawson Gardens and capital improvement projects make up the most of that. And '26 budget for General Parks is $1,954,795, or a 31.1% decrease, which mainly is, no capital is reflected in the '26 budget at this time. Moving to page 94 is our Lawson Garden Endowment Fund. As mentioned, this is where the functions and operations expenditures of Lawson used to live in this budget is now moved out and over to the Parks. So, going forward, what will happen is interest revenue from the Lawson Garden Endowment, as recognized a portion of that will be transferred over to the Parks budget to offset some of the expenditures that happen there. So, in '25, there is no budget as the beginning, there's actually a negative cash balance in this fund, so we'll need to build revenues because historically what's happened is expenditures have outweighed our interest revenue. So, to build that back up, and then in '26, there is a $50,000 expected transfer over to Parks. The last budget to present tonight is on page 95, is our Government Buildings. This is where we provide building maintenance, custodial service, supplies for buildings, and contracted professional services to all our facilities. Our goals are to maintain buildings to a standard that creates a good first impression or reflect pride in the city, provide timely response for assistance to departments for their needs and emergencies as well. Revenues for the Government Buildings, Government Buildings is an internal service fund for other departments, so revenues are derived from interfund rates to facilitate operations as well as unexpected minor repairs. So, changes and highlights, increase in salary and wages, increase some of our administration due to reallocation of 96 hours of the Parks and Facilities Director salary from our Parks budget. Other operating expenses, we increased our professional services to reflect some contractual services for additional custodial care and monitoring of our door and alarm systems and annual fire and elevator inspections. If you're looking at some of the changes in the '25 budget, you'll see some pretty good increases in some reductions in others, and really is what we did, we reallocated some dollars that were primarily living all in one line item and reflected those over about three line items just to reflect where actual costs were really occurring. On page 96, there is also the capital expenditures that were already approved, and the '25 budget for Government Buildings is $1,550,51, or a 4.2% increase, and the '26 budget for Government Buildings is $1,506,902, or a 2.8% decrease, and again, primarily because of no capital being reflected in '26. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Weller?
Holy cow. What don't you do? Seriously, I'm never going to complain about balancing my budget or ask you to do anything again in my life. This is incredible. Well, you already know how, how awesome, I think, the Parks are. And, you know, the improvements that have been made to McGee are just amazing. You know, we, we talked about the backstop that was kind of, you know, almost becoming an ancient heirloom in that park, and now that it's gone, it seems to open up a whole another area. I'm just astounded hearing everything, and I, I'm sure I've heard all this before, but you're taking on even more. I do have one question, and that is, do you, so as far as like spraying for weeds and everything like that, do you look at chemicals that are, that are maybe, do you do research into other chemicals that might be a little bit more, I don't want to say environmentally friendly, but more animal-friendly, people-friendly, because some of them can be quite noxious?
So, we have about either five or six staff that are certified pesticide applicators, so annually they have to do CEUs, and that is, you know, one of the topics, or there's probably several topics and presentations that they are a part of as well that focuses on that, and learning more and more about that, and, you know, working with the Phoenix Conservancy is another alternative as well.
Okay. Yeah, those goats, I mean, that's such a highlight. That's, that's great stuff. All right, well, Kurt, you got to get some sleep because this is way too much, seriously.
Other comments? If not, great job. Thank you very much. Next up, we have Valerie Weaver, our Grants and Special Projects Manager.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As Mayor just said, I am Valerie Weaver, Grants and Special Projects Manager, and my section of the budget book can be found on page 41. This department and this role were brand-new to both the city and to me last year, and this coming Friday is my one-year anniversary of starting in this position. Grants and Special Projects gives the city a full-time focused effort on seeking grant funding for city services, projects, and programs. And this has the benefit of someone here on city staff who has the ongoing organizational knowledge and local knowledge of Pullman combined with the benefit of someone who works on grants full-time. combined with the benefit of someone who works on grants full-time. Currently, my activities are mainly focused on the grant research, writing and application processes. The role requires knowledge and special eye for detail on the many requirements, stipulations, reporting and compliance that are involved in both grant applications and in fulfilling the obligations of grant award agreements. I work with all city departments. Public Works is probably the biggest one, but also planning, economic development, IT, fire, library, parks and recreation and police. I'm maintaining an overarching awareness of the CIP, the budget, council's goals and priorities, the comprehensive plan and other strategic plans that the city has created to know what our needs are and what projects are coming so that I, as I'm researching various grant opportunities and their very specific criteria, I can discern which ones might be a good fit for the city of Pullman and which ones are worth going after to hopefully gain state and federal funding, sometimes private funding to support the city's goals and needs. Complex grant proposals are team efforts, working with the subject matter experts in each of those departments that I mentioned. But I'm coming in and providing support and taking the lead on grant applications in areas where it previously would have been all up to the department heads or division managers. So it's a hope and a goal of mine that I can be wind in their sails, both in terms of their workloads and their budgets as they lead and bring forth the services that this city relies on day in and day out. And so for my budget numbers on page forty-two, we were able to have an almost four percent overall decrease from 2024 to 2025 while still providing for the operating needs of this department of one. And aside from scheduled salary and benefit adjustments, the 2025 to 2026 overall increase includes expenses for grant-specific training, education and certification. In this last year, I have assisted in the successful awards for a Department of Commerce Middle Housing Grant, a $1 million TIB Award for Project Downtown, another $200,000 in Whitman County Point O Nine Funds for Project Downtown, as well as a state and local cybersecurity grant with FEMA for our IT department that we're waiting to get that grant agreement from them to get signed and bring to you guys. Thank you for your time and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Valerie? Councilmember Weller?
Of course, since I've been saying something each time. Valerie, I just have to say you have really stepped into this role and, and really just done gangbusters with it. And, you know, when, when Mike was saying, you know, I think, I think we got somebody, a good person. And, you know, very glad that you stepped up into this role. It is the culmination. We've been thinking about this for more than a decade. And to have somebody right in the ranks that can do this and do it so effectively, bravo. Because I know the entire staff has also been asking for this for a very long time. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much, Valerie. Appreciate it. And Mike?
Mayor, after consulting with the Director of Finance Administrative Services and looking at the late hour, we're going to recommend that we pause the workshop here, bring the rest of the items over into Monday, start fresh at six o'clock and get through the entire Part Two of two because there is some new business tonight and Mr. Wells needs about ten minutes of your time.
Okay. Without, then we'll pause this part of the budget workshop and on to Sean Wells, our Public Works Director. New business around?
New business around, yes. Thank you, everyone, for going very fast through the budget. And I mean slow, I mean wait. It's late. So what I have tonight is a presentation that I thought I would give to the council related to new concrete and winter care and maintenance. We've received a lot of questions regarding, particularly focused on downtown and the sidewalks, the new curb and gutter, the bike lanes, all of the concrete that we put in and spent a lot of money to construct. And so I thought I'd give a quick primer tonight about what should be done for everybody else, what we've done to date, what we as a jurisdiction and the Public Works Department are going to be doing as far as trying to preserve this concrete for its first year of life. And then what we're asking of the residents and the business owners and the property owners there as well. So what did we build this year? Particularly in Project Downtown, we put in a lot of concrete. We put in curbs, gutters, sidewalks, the new colored pigmented bike lane that's there, the planter strips and all of the pavers that we're putting in as well. And I'm sure everyone's been down there. You've seen what it looks like down there and it looks, it's looking really great. We've also built private developments throughout town as well. We've had developers build them as well. We've had the recent Sunnyside Heights development on Panorama Boulevard, another one out near Cameac Elementary. Other city projects that we've done, we've had our sidewalk replacement program where we've put in fixed broken sidewalk panels throughout town. We use some of that funding to repair the damaged sidewalk on the water main break on South Grand. And we've also done a lot of warranty work that we've had in play with City View sidewalks and the curb ramps up City View. There was a small driveway approach down at the bottom of the hill here in Crestview and Grand and some work that we did at the Taravie Roundabout as well. And I threw in a couple more pictures of Project Downtown because it was a lot of concrete. So we need to protect those investments. Concrete's strong. It's the most susceptible to damage in its very first year. So we want to be cautious about that so that we don't cause, through the repeated freeze and thaw cycles of that, we get salt-based de-icers that we typically put down on the streets and that residents put down on their sidewalks. That causes the most damage to brand-new concrete. The ice lowers the melting temperature of the water. And in that case, then the water never really freezes. It just keeps going deeper into those little pores. And when it does freeze, it gets deep and it pops like a little bubble inside and then it thaws and it freezes and it thaws. And it keeps doing that until the surface of the concrete does what's called spalling. And that's what you see in the top picture there was a image that I plucked off of the internet, but the one below it happens to be my personal driveway. And my predecessors at the house didn't necessarily take care of it and preserve it. So I'm going to be looking at my own maintenance. And we want to be cautious too, because a lot of times concrete suppliers will not warranty that concrete if we then turn around and use particular materials that would essentially destroy it in its first year. So we want to be very cautious of that. So what are we as the Public Works Department planning on doing? We took a look at primarily the Project Downtown Pullman is what caught our attention on this. We're putting in a lot of money into concrete. That Pine Plaza speed table is a hundred percent concrete on the surface there. So we're not going to use salt brine or rock salt on Main Street this first year. We've made a conscious decision operationally that we can do it with just plowing the street instead and removing that snow. So we will plow it into piles and then physically go, come back when we can and pick it up and remove it from the area. Normally we would use the salt-based rock salt that we get. We mix that with an aggregate and we go down and it melts it and it turns kind of into a slush in that corners. But this year, we're not going to use any of the salt-based products on the Main Street for the first year. We're going to use an aggregate, though. We're still going to use the aggregate material that we can spread out there. We're just not going to mix it with the salt that we do. That's typically a function that we do out at the yard and mix it to a certain proportion, load the trucks and go. We're also coordinating with Parks Department. As you heard, Kurt, he does some of the snow plowing as well on the sidewalks in the downtown core. After all of the government buildings and the trails and such are done, then they'll come back and they do the sidewalks as well. So we're coordinating with them, just push it off into the snow, into the gutter and O and N will come and pick that up as well. But for the rest of the city, everywhere else, we're still going to use operations as normal. We're still going to use the salt brine for the frost. We're still going to use the rocks and the sand and the aggregate elsewhere in the city. But the downtown core is what we're protecting the most at this first stage. But what about sidewalks? So Pullman City Code says that residents and property owners are responsible for removing the snow within actually the first eight hours after sunrise is how it is read. It's kind of weird. And then this particular section says if you can't get it off, it's so hard that you're going to damage that pavement, then you shall threw said area with ashes, sand, sawdust or some other suitable material. And the orange section there is a throwback to the 1979 ordinance. I don't know anybody that throws their ashes onto the sidewalk, but that's what the code says you can do. But what we're recommending for particularly the businesses in Main Street is to just shovel it into the gutter this first year. Get it off into there. We're going to pick it up. We're going to take care of it after we plow the street. We're going to have piles of snow there. We're going to come back and pick it up. But some of the property owners are going to feel like, hey, I need to do something. I need to protect people from slipping, falling. So sand is what we're recommending. Our typical pile of sand at maintenance and operations that we use for sandbagging during flooding events will be available for residents to come and get sand. They can come get a five gallon bucket. And that's not just for business owners, but that's for anybody in the city as well. You can use just the sand. It doesn't have any of the salt-based products in it that we add when we put it into the trucks to spread. But what is other suitable material and who determines that? Well, I had some of our staff research this, in particular with concrete safe alternatives, de-icing products. And what we're recommending for the first year, particularly for any new concrete and honestly for long-term life, is an acetate-based alternative such as calcium-magnesium acetate and potassium acetate. That potassium acetate is a liquid-based product. It's similar to what you would see as spray on the streets. It's a little more intensive for a resident or property owner to use. So that's kind of the creme de la creme, if you will, but that's not necessarily, if you want to use it, great. But we're recommending primarily the calcium-magnesium acetate products. Some of those sample products you can see here, the Safe Paw, I liked the middle one because it was, it reminded me of a superhero, the Superior Meltyum product. And then the Snow Joe ten-pound bucket there, but they make those in fifty-pound bags as well. All of these are available locally and you can buy them online. You can get them at the local retailers here. Tri-State has it, Pullman Building Supply, Walmart, such like that. They're a little more money than the typical salt-based products, but when you're buying them, you want to look for the parts that say it has CMA, the calcium-magnesium acetate or a hundred percent salt and chloride-free. What we're trying to avoid here are the chloride-based products, the sodium chloride, the calcium chloride. Those are the ones that have the corrosive materials that if they get down deep into the concrete, it will actually start eroding and eating away if there's any steel as well. So like rebar-based products. So one of the things we're planning to do, and this is in production now, is we're going to be creating an informational flyer that we can hand out to primarily the residents and business owners that are fronting new concrete, downtown primarily. But we're going to go back to all of our capital projects that we've built this year and deliver them to all of the immediate adjacent property owners there, talking about what products we recommend, how to preserve the concrete and take care of it in its first year of life. That'll be ready next week is our goal. We didn't have it ready for tonight. It was pushing for timing here. But with that, I'll take any questions you may have on concrete.
So any concrete questions? Councilmember Weller?
So, of course. So are there any concerns about Grand seeping into Maine? Like if we're, are we using the salt based on Grand and is it going to affect Maine? And then second question is, maybe this is really silly to ask, but if I'm walking, for instance, from Grand to Maine on that new sidewalk, is that going to track on and is that going to cause a problem?
The first question is, we're still going to use salt-based products on Grand. And I can work with the guys and the crew on, let's just hit pause when you go through the intersection and you turn it right back on later. But it's primarily the continually repetitive application of that product over and over and over again. If they plow it and they don't salt it, that's probably the best. But if they incidentally get some salt on there, it's not going to be super critical, but it's when you do the repeated applications in a hard winter, that's what's really going to affect it. And that kind of answers the second part of your question is walking or tracking it. We're not super concerned about that because it's kind of incidental.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much. This is very informative and it, and being responsive to a question that came up related to new concrete.
Great. Thank you.
With that, we don't have any other business before. Start to entertain a motion for adjournment. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
So any opposed? We are adjourned. And so our next meeting will be Monday, November fourth, starting at 6:00 PM.